I'm going to go ahead and call the regular, excuse me, the regular meeting of the Woodstock Board of Ed to order. Mr. Kamash?
Good evening, everyone. It is my distinct pleasure to introduce to you this evening Maddie Gronski, who has been nominated and elected as the pledged student for this month's board education meeting. Normally, I get information about students that I draft up or something to say, but tonight, I'm just reading what the teachers said because it was so awesome, I just, I didn't want to touch it. Here's what they said. "If you are looking for the very essence of a successful fifth grade student, Maddie Gronski fits the description. This bright young lady is incredibly hardworking and it shows in the quality of her assignments. She has proven to be a leader in the classroom, often pointing her classmates and groupmates towards success. On the playground, she is a very positive presence, nary the destructive or disrespectful word as I've heard from her. Possibly most importantly, her smile and bubbly personality are infectious, very demeanor spreads among students and staff alike. These positive attributes are only the tip of the Maddie Gronski iceberg."[107.42][107.42](laughter) "This wonderful student has so many positive attributes that they are hard to count. The fifth grade team is proudly represented by Natalie Gronski, tonight's leader of the board of leaders." If you all please stand with your hands in the air.
(audience clapping) Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the mother of our riches stands, one nation, under God, and universal with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Congratulations. Thank you very much.[184.52][184.52](applause) Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of January 26, 2012? Do we have a first and a second? Any discussion? Um, discussion? They start on page three and go to page seven. There are no discussion, all in favor of approval? Oppose, same? Communication reports, correspondence, there's a bunch of them. In your packet, you have a letter from a student at Woodstock Academy, from, she's a student at, I'm sorry, at Woodstock Academy, who lives in Canterbury. As you can see, the letter that's written here has got some interesting things in here about the facilities and whatnot. When I first got this letter, I had talked to Frank about it, you know, I think it'd be wise to have somebody from the academy come down. So we had invited both the student and Mr. Karen to come down. Subsequent, a couple of conversations took place, and you see the written response from, from Mr. Karen at the academy, who states that, you know, the student sent the letter to the wrong person. She didn't, I'm not sure if she didn't understand that we actually don't have operational control over the academy, and didn't realize that I'd go to the Board of Trustees. But having that aside, there are some things in here that, you know, I questioned, quite frankly, things like mold remediation and the urgency that that was done and things like that. And there's a, what I think, you know, my opinion is a pretty decent response from Mr. Karen. I subsequently got a second email last night, I think Frank got it as well, that reiterated some of these points. And I spoke with him this morning in my monthly meeting with Christine Swenson, their chairperson of their Board of Trustees, and Kim as well. And I think, you know, based on the fact that this was an assignment, and I think they've addressed the issue of mold remediation, quite frankly, the second half of the letter's more opinion than anything else, I didn't feel it necessary to have Kim come down and address it. I think the letter takes care of it. But I did want to point that out to everybody, that, you know, it was written, again, as an assignment first and foremost. You know, the student did bring up an issue with mold remediation, and I think, you know, Kim addressed it. So if anybody has any questions, feel free to ask now or let me know afterwards.
Is that student in the audience? Did we invite that person?
We invited her. I'm not sure if Fran is here.
No, she's not. We did invite her. Her mother called me yesterday and said that we're in a respectfully request to show up that she understands it was an assignment and that she appreciated our input. She said, understood.
There's that, and then I, we're looking here at our packet. We've got a letter here from Andrew Jay and Karleen Massey. I don't know if they've got a copy of it here. I'm going to have to read it here. Talking about budget priorities, support for teachers in age, the art program, and give the intelligent kids. I think it's important to know, I've heard, you know, resoundingly over the last two weeks that, you know, parents and non-parents employing need to get the board to restore art. I want to be clear. We lost art in the fifth and sixth grades, and computers in the seventh and eighth, that was the other way around. Art in the seventh and eighth grade, computer in the fifth and sixth grade, not for any budget reason. And we just talked about this again at the finance committee meeting. It wasn't for a budget reason, it was because of a scheduling change that we tried with trimesters. And Frank, you would agree that it didn't work out quite the way you thought it would? And we'll be back at the table in March to figure out how we can move back to either quarter system or modified trimester system to put those, you know, to give computers back and art back. But it's not a throughput issue, it's not a capacity issue, it's not a budget issue.
So there wasn't some type of SRBI, the fact we had to give that extra SRBI?
No. If you remember, we were actually taking the 30 minutes of SRBI Tier One away. So there were two issues that we saw with the scheduling thing last fall. One was, we had to redo the schedule because of the SRBI change where we didn't have to give the 30 minutes to every student. And the other one was pullouts for private band lessons.
Dr. Baron, do you concur? That's what happens, that there wasn't been back from SRBI enough?
Well, there wasn't the major impact that we had two years ago when we were delivering SRBI to all the students across all three tiers. We reduced the SRBI to Tier One students. We're still required to give it to Tier Two and Three students, so there is a 30-minute pullout call, correct, for Tier Two and Tier Three students?
Well, there's the regular class period.
Yeah. I usually work pullout, that's an act. This, Dr. Harkness just asked me if everybody understands what SRBI is. Give you a quick tutorial. SRBI stands for Scientifically Research-Based Interventions. The state and federal government requires that prior to a student being put into the system to be identified as special education, in the past, we could simply give a cognitive ability test to a student and then recommend or not recommend that student for special education services. Because of the state and federal mandate, now we have to go through the SRBI system to give the student either a small group or intensified one-on-one instruction. If the student does not progress appropriately, then that student can be recommended for special education screening. So it's a pre-special education assessment, instruction and assessment process.
So would it be fair to say the teachers are spending their time on SRBI?
Just to some varying degrees across the elementary and middle school, yes.
And this is, this is state mandate, correct?
State and federal mandate.
Yes. Have we asked for board of finance for extra money because of the new state mandate?
No.
We also have a second piece of correspondence from Eileen Dunak, the library media specialist, talking about the potential elimination of the media clerk position. That's in your packet as well.
Tony, can I ask a question?
Sure.
On the last subject. Again, sorry, a little adherent. Frank, do you, are you in a position to commit to the group that art can be restored to all students?
We're going to try like crazy.
How do we get to, well, that's a, how do we get to that level which, I mean, I think you were using numbers near, near 100% of, you know, I'm sure that I don't want to put these things, I wouldn't want to remember exactly how you put it, but how do we get to a point where we can comfortably walk out of a meeting and say, art's coming back at this point in time?
Well, I think we committed, along with Paul, when we approved it last fall, approved the change, and we'll try it for this year, and come back, you told me earlier this week at our March meeting, with a proposed change. I would say they're probably still working through the details, I can't imagine that they'd have them all done and not want to share it with us as soon as they could.
Right. So maybe in March, we walk out of the March meeting with that kind of meeting?
Well, I think in, I think in March, we walk out with a better understanding of what the scheduling may look like next year. And I would say, if there's not too many questions, we'd make a potential change in April. If there were a lot of questions, then they've got to go back and do work, just like we did last fall, we made them go back. It may be many, but I, we will absolutely have it done by the June meeting.
And no amount of money would rectify this? This is purely a scale line. Is that correct?
Uh, if you wanted to add another art teacher, I'm sure it could be a lot easier.
I just want to understand why all of that's...
The computers, this is part of the...
Right. It's not, it's just art. It's computers as well.
Yeah.
We had a very lengthy discussion on changes to the schedule.
I'm going to back up on that claim, because even if you added another art teacher, you only have one art room in the middle school. And you can't divide that room up and have two different classes going on at the same time. You'd also get complaints about that.
Tony's house? Excuse me? Tony's house? He has an art room in his house?
Yeah. I'm sure you could take the roof, let my daughter will soon vacate when she leaves for college. And I will be very generous in what I rent it to the town for. Okay. Board Chairman's report. So it's a meet and greet, for those who were able to make it last night. I think it was a fantastic success, and I think the board owes a debt of gratitude to Dr. Harkness for quarterbacking that for us. Thank you very much, Sarah. As well as, I know she worked closely with Karen, and I would be remiss if I didn't publicly say thank you to the people at Woodstock Hill. Every time we do this, they just, they keep getting better. The hors d'oeuvres last night were fantastic. We had a concert from the middle school jazz band, and those kids are simply amazing. And most of them, I found out after the fact, are actually sixth grade students. So they're only going to get better as time goes on. We had several of the academy trustees there last night, and again, as I mentioned earlier, I had my monthly conversation with Christine and Kim this morning, and they will put it in writing, because I asked them to, but they are asking our middle school jazz band to jam with the high school jazz band and actually use the new recording studio that Woodstock Academy has. What will come of that? I have no idea, but just the fact that, in hearing them last night, that was one of the first things they said to me this morning at 7:30 when we met. I can't say enough about it. So again, thank you very much for putting, for pulling that together. Yep?
I was thinking to the night if we could jointly write a letter thanks to Richard at the end?
Absolutely.
And, if you want, I don't know, if everybody in the board is signing, or perhaps you are too, but maybe if we, if I were to make a motion, should we all vote, you know?
Yeah, I don't think we need to do that, Sarah. If you would like to write a draft, I will tell you, honestly, it's easier if I did sign it versus having to bring it back and wait a month for the next meeting.
Well, right. I don't know whether you can even pass around a second signature sheet to my individual designer.
I'd have no problem with that. Does anybody else have any issue with that? No. I, I think it'd be more powerful if we, if, and everybody, if you're okay with trusting Sarah to write a thank you letter to Richard at the end, we can easily, Mike, if you just want to start with a blank piece of paper and sign your signature and just pass it on down?
Well, if I pass that, it could be like a big shine and a slide check, isn't it?
No, 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 no. No, it will only be used for the thank you letter to Richard. Don't ask if the Maserati shows up, but yeah.
Karen, Karen, if you can, I'm a girl. Should I get one that's online, that's...
That's for you.
But you can get one that's online.
Online, so it looks...
So it looks, on site?
That's true. They don't, they don't...
Yes. Yes. Steve brings up a good point. For those who were able to join us last night, the inn donates the waitstaff as well as all of the food. The only revenue they get, they actually closed the dining room that night, the only revenue they get is from the bar. So I encouraged everybody that I talked to to tip the bartenders heavily, because that's, you know, they'll get their normal salary from the inn, but also, you know, we don't pay a nickel for that. So that's, that's something that we can't say enough about. The inn just does a fantastic job. Okay. The only other thing that I would have under Chairman's report is, I had a board member ask me about minutes, meeting minutes, and whether it's appropriate that we don't post draft minutes sooner than we do. Sorry, I mean, if you'd like to...
Yes, that was me.
...take us through the thought. That's okay, I'm sorry.
Well, I just have some concerns about the way that we manage our minutes and agendas. I feel like still, we're not getting them up in a timely manner. I think it's a disservice to us at the board, because it takes so long to read the minutes, especially from our general meeting, that action items can't even be worked on unless we are all taking meticulous notes here at the meeting. It's just, it's too long. But to put up a draft minute as opposed to a full minute is not recommended, is not a recommended practice. It's allowed, it's legal under FOI, but it's not recommended, because for the public to read a draft set of minutes, they're not, it's, it's, I don't know, let me find out how I do it.
Are we allowed to post it as unapproved?
Everything, all minutes, when they're posted within the seven days, are not going to be approved until the next, until the board meets for its next regular meeting. That's true of all boards and committees.
Right, right.
Are allowed, but phrasing it as draft minutes allows for revisions to come later, which is legal, but not recommended, because the minutes that are posted in draft version later then have to be changed. So the public now goes on the website painfully and downloads our minutes and their draft. And then it's really up to them to continue checking for when final is now on, when now the draft's been removed and now it's the official version. It's not a good policy. It's not done by any other board of commissioners that I can see in the town. And there's a reason. It's very time-consuming and tedious for the people posting it, because it allows for error. And when you post draft minutes, it's under, or unapproved minutes, you know, before the board meets again to make the final approval, it's understood that it's not approved until the next meeting. And then the motion to approve is made, the minutes are approved, and then you go, if there's any corrections that are made at that time, it's common practice to see the next, the next version on there. So I feel like we're, right now, I feel like we're not following FOI to the extent that we need to, because I don't think we're making it in the timeline, and I am concerned about that.
So what is your concern? That we have to wait for a month?
I would prefer that we stop doing the old draft version. I prefer that when the minutes are done within the seven days of posting, that's what it is. If there's, if the person that the board chair or subcommittee or a full committee wants to have input from the group, they, they're welcome to put a draft watermark on it and have comment, you know, oh, you missed something, or you didn't get my second, whatever. And then when they, when they're locked in and posted, they're locked in and posted. And then at the next meeting, they're approved or the further correction is made, but it's reflected in the next minute. There's never an adjustment made to the first one that's posted. If you're locked in, it is official.
So if there's an error that gets discovered at the next meeting?
Yes, just like tonight, there could be that.
Right. Amend, amend, approve the amendments.
Right.
How does that get recorded?
You'll make a motion to amend the minutes, to say that, no, it wasn't me that did this, or something was misspelled, or something was, needed to be changed, and it's recorded.
Okay, so, so as a matter of operation, we have our meeting tonight, within seven days, the minutes get typed up. We would post them on the website as unapproved minutes.
As minutes, as the minutes from this meeting.
Okay. And then...
If you want to have a little caveat that it was technically not approved until the board meets again, go ahead, but that really is locked in. You could never then repost that with that deleted, yes.
So we post that on the website, it may be available in the district office, and then in May, when we come back, instead of having our typical agenda, item three, approval of minutes, we would change that to say, discussion of minutes of February 23 meeting.
You can still say approval of minutes, and then if someone has an issue, that it will be, it would be noted that.
What, what happens if three months later, I go back and look at that minutes, that set of minutes, mistake? Do I have to now look at two sets of minutes to find out there was a mistake?
No. Sadly, you would look at the same minutes with the same stupid mistake, which happens all the time.
But I got to look at two sets?
No, one set. Whatever's in there is supposed to be.
No, I got to look at the second set to find the mistake. Okay?
The second month's meeting, yeah.
Yeah. I got to look at two sets of meetings, minutes, and everyone, I look at all seven.
It's not, it's not, it's not a new thing. That's what's done all the time. You leave February, and then you say, okay, this is what happened. This is March, and in the first three inches, you'll see if there was a mistake.
Yeah. Unless we do it like we're doing it now, which gets it up from Google on the page.
Which then Karen has to put them up as a draft and then wait a month. A full month happens, plus probably a couple of weeks, and then she has to then change this, remove the draft, put up a final. So in the meantime, someone who wants to know what actually happened has the version that they got, hopefully seven days after the meeting ended, and then has to then go on again and download the official non-draft version. It's just, no one does it like this. It's a tremendous amount of work for, I don't know what the game is.
Karen, is this tremendous amount of work?
Yeah, I don't know. Is this a tremendous amount of work?
I mean, I can tell you, and I don't know if you, you know, Dr. Baron and I spoke with Tom Henick on FOI, from FOI, after the last board event, and he indicated that the minutes from the regular meeting had to be available within seven days in the district office. They are, by law, they are not required to be on the website. We, of course, will continue to do that. We always have, you know, good procedure. He said that it's okay to state on the top of the minutes prior to the board approval. He said that he also recommended that we do that, because that's the way he does it in his, because then the next one, it is approved, meaning that on top it says that these meetings have not been approved. But it's not the last meeting, it's one that is approved, so that's still correct. And then when those are approved, we go back, take that statement off, and if there's a change, we make the correction, and we sort of put five minutes up. And those final minutes are what gets filed in an official book, and which we eventually send over to town hall for their, say, for their, um...
Record.
Yes.
And this is, this is our attorney?
No, this is the freedom of information.
This is the freedom of bringing...
As the one that we...
Not since recommended.
That's correct.
And he said what we do is fine. It's allowable.
Did he say allowable or recommended?
He said he recommends that we put that the minutes have not yet been...
So we didn't recommend...
Then the official minutes...
No, we didn't.
Is this something we want to spend a lot of time on? I can't see...
My bigger objection is I don't think that they're getting posted in a week, because I can't follow along with what's happening. I'm just trying to follow along with subcommittees and the regular meetings, and I can't get my hands on it. This meeting, for tonight, the minutes from this meeting, we didn't get till this week. It's like way too late. Way, way, way too late. Okay, what we could do, you didn't get them because they weren't in the board packet. I mean, we sent them... They were in the board packet. Is it like the same practice that we use for subcommittee meetings, as soon as we get the draft, we can simply add that to one of Katrina's duties, that she distributes them to the board of ed members in addition to Mr. Olson, who puts them up on the website? That would be very simple, like to add to our email process. It just means all board members will get them.
That's better.
Than the next... Was it getting on the website in a week? Within a, within a day or two of the time that we have them. But Mr. Henick said by law, it's not required to get the rest, because you're not...
But by policy, we'd like...
But by policy, we absolutely...
So is that, is that a source of concern, if we get them emailed to the board members within seven days?
If it's really being made available. I think it's very hard for the public and for us to get the whole information.
Our website needs a lot of work.
The website is horrendous.
Yeah, we know the website.
And most of it's are required by law to be available within our office within two days. So if there are motions, that is always available, so.
Okay. Very good. Committee reports, so you've got in your packet, tiny committee minutes from, I'm sorry, 1/26 to 6, policy subcommittee minutes, long-range capital planning minutes.
I've got a couple of things I'd like to pull out of that. There's a lot of information on there, some of the things that are problematic with our certain reforms, but there's two ends in particular. One, we can't get any more accurate financial information to replace the middle school and elementary school roofs, which, as you know, are a lot of warranty now. We'd like to go back to the board of finance and estimate correctly, get an estimate for those. Other issue was that fuel oil tanks, that we're worried about leaking, that has the cap that cracks under it. We'd like to go back to the board of finance and get money to replace that before it actually comes in the market and we'll back up with something.
Okay, so, would you call that a roof study?
Yes.
Any idea how much you'd be asking for for that? For the study?
Yeah, it's hard to go back to the...
We can go back and look at what we got from Drummy, Roseanne, and Anderson, the real facility study that you did, what, five years ago?
A couple happened now, I think.
Because of more than engineers, that's better.
Yeah, because that was important.
So what I would suggest is, was...
Because they're those figures.
Right. So what I would suggest is, call, and ask them, to do this type of a study, give me a ballpark estimate, because I, I think we need that before we can... And we're going to talk about the oil tank, actually, a little bit later, so I think we have a way to close that gap. Okay? So then we also have finance committee minutes from the 18th, and minutes of the academic committee from the 13th. Sorry, I think you wanted to have a conversation on the academic committee, and it should be the, or both be a place to do it.
Great. I didn't see the maps of the academic committee.
Nope, they're actually stuck underneath the packet.
Oh, okay.
They're added after the fact.
So, is everybody, I guess everybody has a...
Yep.
So, so that, Michael's not able to be at this meeting, but Steve was involved, and I and Frank, I think, told Harkness we're there, because the local came from the board of ed. And the main agenda that I had to answer before I got up was just brainstorming ideas for what this committee should be doing for being a leader. And so, you know, I went around and asked everybody, you know, to talk out their ideas, and actually, we were not very adept with it, I think, so. There was some special way to revisit the charter that was sort of our main product during the first year of our system. I have a copy of the charter that I'm glad to share with people, I didn't think copies were distributed. But, but my feeling is, you know, charter's there, but let's think, let's think about what we actually want to do for the remainder of this year. And I don't really feel like I have much to work with coming out of that meeting. And I don't really feel like I have much to work with coming out of that meeting. So I wanted to, you know, bring it back to the rest of the board, and put to, do we need an academic committee? Does the academic committee have a different function in the board? Are there important things that the academic committee could be doing that we, together with the administrative leaders in the school system, can agree on that I think jointly would like to look at, or, or is it just really kind of on startup? And so I present that to you as a question, perhaps we could, I honestly don't know what to do for our next meeting, because I don't feel like I have, just any ideas of progress or what should we do for the remainder of the year. So, if I have ideas I wasn't given?
Yeah, I mean, my feeling was the one member, is a new member, and he couldn't attend, so we should at least have another meeting where he can participate.
Well, frankly, without, I'll give you my opinion, as you know, I only have them.
Yes.
I think this is a critical committee for this board. There are things that we use the academic committee for in the past, elementary school report cards, we had that go to the academic committee first, as a, as a pressure cast, for lack of a better word, before they came to the full board. You know, in general, committees are designed not to have us spend more of our time away from home, but to do the more detailed work that we cannot get done in a regular board meeting. I think, you know, in that particular case, using the academic committee as a sounding board for the change to the elementary school report cards, saved us probably three or four hours of conversation, because they, you know, that particular program went to the academic committee a couple of times, asked questions, had a good dialogue with the administration and the teachers that were proposing it, brought it to the board. It made it a lot easier for, for, I know, me being on the board, to hear that the academic committee put this through a rigorous test and, and they support it. Or, or didn't support it. You know, I, I think it's also, you know, doing things like the scheduling, things like that. There are, there are reasons why we have committees, and I think, you know, everybody needs to understand that this is a committee of the board, just like any other committee, the finance committee, or the policy committee, or anything else, and they, they have the same authority as any other committee has. I'd also like to see our academic committee get to spend time with the academy academic committee, they get a separate academic committee. I think it'd be wise if, if we could do maybe one joint meeting a year between the two, as an example. You know, we need to understand what's going on there, because, you know, I'll remind everybody, our mission is pre-K through 12. Even though we don't have control over 12, because, you know, 9 through 12, because we have a variety of high schools that our students go to, our mission is pre-K through 12. So I'd like to hear, not only from the academy, even though, you know, I think it's going to be academy, if Boag has one, maybe we can get some time with them, and the other high schools as well.
The thing that I see that's lacking the most on this is why are there no teachers? I mean, if you're looking for a direction, maybe put a call out to the teachers and say you'd like to participate, I mean, I'm sure there's a lot of, yeah, I think it's valuable, that would be valuable.
Yeah, I believe that was the original one, Tom.
Yeah, well, I think there, I think there maybe is, to put it clearly, I think maybe there's a difference of perspective between, between ourselves, and companies of board, and the student administration as to what is our proper domain of action. And charter, Frank commented that charters used to indicate that this committee, although the charter is written as being that members of the board in competition with the school administration, you know, will do the following things, that nevertheless, things like setting academic goals, it's also like it's really beyond our sphere. So I think there's a, you know, there is a legitimate question as to how far we as board members, you know, who have different professional backgrounds, so more relevant, directly relevant academics than others, as is true of residents who deal with finance or long-range planning, building maintenance, whatever. So aside from the fact that it may happen that different board members have the different expertise, nevertheless, as a group, we are here representing citizens of the town of Woodstock, and to what point is it appropriate for us to really be taking an active role in talking about the academic content of our schools, as opposed to saying, we hired you guys, you're the experts, we're here to support you, part of the teachers, we could facilitate their goals as well. We obviously can't, but we have to be able to work together, and we're in that part, and that's what I'm not, I think, at this time, I appear here on the, to be honest, I have to see that.
Sarah, can I interject something? I sat through the meeting, and I fully understand why you're with the board, because it makes a lot of sense that I sat through a meeting that was totally non-productive. And so, my thought was, I'm going to paraphrase something I mentioned at the meeting, but I'd love to expand a little bit. We're going to be going through a conversation a little later about how we fit excellence in education in a limited budget, we can define limited any way we want, but somewhat limited budget more or less. And I would think there needs to be a group of this board, a subcommittee of this board, that is thinking past that, that is thinking about how do we become excellent, how do we become the next great, how do we be one of the very few in Connecticut that actually is starring in results? And some, some group, and we can't spend once a month in a group like this to try and get there. And so I think you need to have that group that creates the vision that, that we, that we're reaching for the stars, and what are those things that we're not thinking about in this group? And I, I think what you need, you're probably looking for is this group to say, this is what we really want that group to do, this is what we want you to talk about, this is what we want you to achieve, and bring back to us ideas that we're not thinking of. And maybe it's researching what other people are doing, sharing information with other districts, some of the ones that the governor quotes as being the stars. But I think the group has to be a more visionary group that finds angles for, for us that we're just missing. So, and I think you need the full support of this group in order to take it to that level. That's what I thought was missing.
Keith?
Well, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think all the charters of all those committees were approved by the full board? So that charter has been approved by the full board? Secondly, I happen to be on the academy academic committee, and I'm very impressed at the work they get done. Philippa, who's the chair, and Holly Singleton, who's the, I guess is the admin representative of the liaison. And it is made up of teachers, but both, both Holly Singleton and Philippa, I'm sorry, first and I forgot your name.
Hackett.
Hackett. Have said that they would be more than willing to come, you know, tell us about what their, their board does, except they just want us to invite them, they don't want to be pushy. So they are willing to step forward, if we want to put that. And that would be good, because it's a standing committee that's years old over there, so...
Wouldn't we all agree that we have to have an academic subcommittee? I mean, would we all agree that?
I, I feel very strongly with you, Tom.
They just have to have, they have to have the mission and support to do it.
If we're not teaching a problem, I don't see how it's successful.
I agree, totally agree.
It just doesn't get off the ground.
So Steve's point, if we have a working model at the academy of how this interaction works between the board members and the teachers, maybe it's, we use us for some of us who are on the academic committee to actually sit in the trustee's academic committee, just kind of watch what they're doing. Well, that, I think that, it's a public forum, so we could go anytime we want.
That's it, no dates, whether, whether someone knows dates are, you have your question?
Okay, we can do that. But they, they will actually come, you know, and do a presentation to us and help us if we...
I think I need to go, I mean, I, I would encourage you guys to go up and see how they do it, but also have them come down so that you can get some one-on-one time. More, so I say slimmed-down agenda for that meeting to pick their brain. How do they do things? What things did they tackle first? What do they, you know, what things do they stay away from, you know? As with anything else, what's the third rail that they know is going to be an issue when they do other things first? So in terms of your, your next meeting, I suggest that that be your next meeting, and then from there, also figure out how we can get some teacher involvement. I, I would say if we can have some rotating teachers versus, you know, one or two that have to come every three months, you know, if, you know, if you look at the topics that you want to talk about, and, you know, if it's like the YouTube link that I sent to three of you about, you know, different ways to organize a classroom, maybe you get some, you know, elementary school groups to come in and, and work on that particular project, and then, you know, get another one to work on a different project. I think we probably get more support that way, too, from the actual teachers, you know, I'm sure without putting words in their mouth, give them an hour or two is a lot easier than giving a month or two. But I absolutely think that we need an academic committee, and I'm not hearing anybody disagree. And I think the charter, as it's written, is fine. And if the board approves it, if you want, I can send out a copy of that again to everybody, but it's, I mean, we keep that thing up before we plan it, so. Thank you. Citizens' participation.
In regards to the academic committee, would you like to have it involved in this?
Oh, yeah.
Perhaps you could email me, I'm Wendy Bradley, so you could email me, and I'd like, I'd be glad to volunteer. Thank you. No, I wasn't leaving the room.
So Holly, you'll get the date to the meeting?
Thank you, Dr. Baron. Do you meet at night?
No.
I do? 10:30?
7:30. No, we all try to be home long before 10:30.
Wendy's following this meeting.
We meet following the policy committee, which is six.
Okay.
So, hey, I'll give it a...
And they're all open meetings, that's something to reinforce, they're all open meetings.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you, thank you. Yeah, I mean, I, I'm actually glad this subject came up, because one thing that really goes front of the academic committee is making sure that the board is helping the administration and teachers along, I really, from my perspective, what I'm seeing right now is I'm seeing a lot of burnout, I'm seeing overburdened administrators and teachers, and, and cuts aren't necessarily a bad thing, it's inevitable, we're going to have to start cutting the budget. And so if we don't have a plan of action as to which direction we're going to take, this overburdened teacher and administration is only going to get worse, the burnout's going to get worse, and the quality's going to degrade. So I'm very concerned that, you know, I would love to see case studies seen on other schools that have succeeded in cutting budget and maintain, and even risen above the level that they currently were at. I think there's a lot of economies of scale that we can reach. You know, we have some talented teachers in, in the school system, and if we can leverage their abilities, I mean, I, I know some teachers that are fabulous with the, the, you know, remedial orders, and I know some that are fabulous with the primary, so why not take advantage of that somehow? Or, you know, we need to somehow make this work with less money, and I think we can, but it needs to, I think our administrative boards, overburdened, they can't look into it themselves, we need to help them, I would love to be on here.
Why don't I just surround the...
Yeah.
I mean, I'll be quite frank, this is the first time I've heard that parents or citizens voted, who got to be on, or can help out on subcommittee for education, that really have to be something on our website, and maybe even just hand around the school flyer going home on Friday, saying, hey, we look, you know, in these areas, we'd like to run a vote, if you're trying to do it. Because I really don't think that there's a lot of America, the obvious is definitely small, but I know, there are really talented people in here that have, that even redesign your website, it's fair enough. Reach out, let us know what you need, and this is all for you guys, because they even know, so.
That, that would be...
I would say get the word out.
Yeah, absolutely, I will caution folks, because it is a committee of the board, we absolutely want the help, and I'm glad to hear we've got some already. It's a non-voting position, so the voting can only be done by board members, so I just want to set that expectation up right.
I just have a question about the roof study, if that's where, like, you can put together as a thought project, just to put your roof out to bed, kind of thing, like, what does the study entail?
It's really trying to get an estimate of how much it costs.
So you just need...
It's a quote.
I need something, you can help with that, so don't pay for that, it's not captured anything.
Getting free would be better.
My husband's a commercial roofing contractor, I'm sure he would be happy for you guys, so.
Yeah, please give us a ballpark estimate.
Just, you just want to know about how much something would cost.
We'll be wanting that.
That's good enough for us to go to the board.
Very accurate, and engineer. So Mrs. Waters, our maiden supervisor has worked with your husband.
Yes, he's very nice. Are you, well, I'm just saying, like, I mean, if you need to hire somebody to do it, to hire somebody to do it, we can, maybe Kevin, you and I can talk.
I think just trying to figure out an estimate, that...
That's where we got the current number from, right?
That's correct.
Oh, okay, then you can see that.
It also has different stages to it, too, that the roof might not be able to just be done in one solid project, it might have to have a series of stages.
If you need, like, an architect or an engineer or something, well, you can't do that, but if you need more information, I would say to use contact.
Yeah, if you guys can connect for a few minutes and see if that's possible, it doesn't hurt to ask.
It doesn't, if you can do it for free, you can, what you need, if you can do it, you'll do it.
Excellent, Lizzy?
Your next agenda item, of course, is budget, so if I could, I would like to...
Well, actually, you're talking about next year's budget? That's further down. This is going to be this year's current projected spend, we'll have another citizen's participation before that. Feel free to...
No, not today, yeah.
Feel free to speak now, but...
No, I think I'll speak closer to when it's more timely.
Okay. But as I think you said, we'll have two more, one before a part of the discussion, and one afterwards. At this point, Frank, can you tell us where we are this year?
I'm going to pass out to you the monthly report that we've given you in the past. Those of you that keep yours in agreement with you will notice that this one is not a great deal different than a month ago, a lot of things have stabilized for now, we've given some update on electricity and heating oil. Once again, the first chart that you want to look at is the fourth column over estimated balance, looking at certified, non-certified, benefits, what have you. If today were the last day of school, you would have a positive balance in your budget Again, that middle chart shows you the charting, the following that we have for our electricity, heating oil, bus fuel, what we're paying, how much we've expended. Bottom line is, if you look at that third chart, now at the bottom, the very right-hand corner, where it says February 23rd, 2012, you have the balance that I see you have as of today, $78,855.40, and remember, you do get tuition from, or revenue from one tuition student of $8,127. So you would have a balance today, this was the last day of school again, of $86,982.40. Are there any questions?
To get to your, your question, I don't think? If this holds close, the, the hope would be that we could, yeah, I mean, you've been through this drill before, there's going to be some puts and takes, but if this number's going to go up and down. But if we end up with that typically half a percent to one percent at the end of the year, that we do?
There'll be the remediation for the...
Well, there's also money left over in the, in the long-lapsing account fund, so if say this dropped to $30,000...
So if, say this dropped to thirty thousand, between this and what's already there, you could cover that cost for the oil tank.
Just making sure one way or another.
Yeah.
It scares you under. I hate, I still hate the cap to, to basically spend money from capital items from the operating budget. Going, not going back to the board of finance for that type of thing is a huge mistake. It means that we can't do things operationally, which really has to do with day-to-day education and kids and kids do. We're spending money on our capital, on our operations, the capital.
Well, I agree, I think you know what the board of finance would say.
That means in that.
Well, at some point, Kevin, Frank, you've got to stop asking and getting your head beat against the rock. Hopefully you develop after six years of hearing the same thing the seven times.
It's our job. It's our job.
Partially.
That's what we're here for.
Partially.
I would reiterate what Tony just said, I'm sorry, Mr. Rosenthal. You know, from the monthly reports that have been here over the last couple of years, the variable in this report is special education, that's usually the driver. And I can assure you, Mr. Ford, we're not going to not spend money simply to have it there for the end of the year. That's not, we wouldn't do that.
I know.
See, now just, I think we've actually discussed this, but is there any, like, band-aid fixed for a couple of months for the terangial?
Your real concern is not the cap, it's the age of the tank itself and that we're certain that it's going to start to not do the cap inside somewhere.
No, okay, because I've heard a lot of talk about the cap being cracked.
Well, that's what really kicked off the.
Right, the cap being cracked, water consumed.
But we've been monitoring this for many, many years.
But I mean, is there anything we can do? Does a ten-dollar fix bond up the crack or something?
No. Our real concern, Ms. Rosenthal, is this tank has been inspected on a yearly basis and we've been given the go-ahead just to continue. But the concern is that if that tank should spring a leak, and as Mr. Ford said, it's old, then you're well beyond the sixty thousand dollar repair. Then you're into environmental problems and what have you, so.
Which we would have no choice but to go back as an emergency item to the board of finance anyway. Any other questions on the projection as to where we sit tonight? All righty.
We passed out the quarterly report, expanded report to you at the last meeting. Requested that anybody have any questions to give us a call. There were none. If you have any questions now, we'll answer it.
All right, that's my all righty.
If you have in your packet the two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven strategic profile, the genetic department of education collects data over the course of the year and then produces what is called the strategic profile. We are required to give it to the board of education at the meeting, after which we receive it. I believe the state statute says that we're supposed to receive it before November and then give it to you in November. The fact that this report has just gotten to us is additional evidence for the case that the state department of education has been decimated and they're barely getting reports out on a timely basis. This will be put on the agenda for your March meeting to give you some time to look at it. I would caution those new board members, as I've cautioned the veteran board members in the past, this is two-year-old data. Two-year-old data. So I would again implore you that if you have a question about something on there, as you look at it over the course of the next four weeks and it doesn't make sense, please call us and we will give you the data as we presently have it. But again, this is two-year-old data. Call if you have any questions, we'll put it on the agenda for the March board of education. Okay, under information, additional announcements, as most of you know, we have been implementing the headline process in grade seven and eight. And we are gradually building a core of parents that are signed up. Right now, we have a hundred and one parents. That's up from, I believe, eighty-something the last time we reported this to you. If you take into consideration that we have approximately two hundred families in grade seven and eight, we're just about at fifty percent. Mr. Gamache, myself, and Mr. Olson are going to meet shortly to determine what our next step is going to be. My personal opinion is I want to take one more shot at sending out something to the hundred or so parents who have not signed up yet, explaining to them what the program can afford them, and then sometime close to the end of the year, send out a survey to those parents who still have not signed up and ask them why they haven't, to see what we can do to enhance the program moving forward. So right now, we're at about fifty percent. Okay, Mr. Walker and I talked about this before. One of the other concerns is how quickly are teachers posting grades? And from what I understand, that is, the speed of those posts is increasing and we'll work on that as we, as we go along. Any other questions?
Yeah, I do have one. Could you, as you report, which is great, on the number that, how it increases the difference, could you also, could estimate be done in terms of the response time of features and what we should expect, or what parents should expect in response time? Is it reasonable to expect every other week, every day, or is it every month? What would be a reasonable expectation?
Yeah, I don't mind reporting on that, I'd like to have a little more time.
Sure, I don't mean right this minute.
I don't mean either. I, I thank you. I was also saying, not in March either, give us a little more time to work on it, what have you. We're still focusing, Mr. Davis, on getting parents to sign up. That's been our main focus. We are working with the teachers about posting in a timely fashion. One of the things I've mentioned several times at the board of ed, it's one thing to post a spelling quiz or a ten-point, a ten-item multiple choice, it's a different thing to post a test that is based fifty percent on the students answering an open response question. Teacher needs a little, a bit more time.
And don't get me wrong, I'm not asking for an improvement, all I'm asking for is an expectation. What is, what's a reasonable expectation that the teachers are comfortable with? That, that's all.
And we will report on that. Appreciate you not asking for it right now. And you probably won't get it until April or May. Okay. Another item, there's been some question about are we paying our bus drivers appropriately or are we breaking the law? I wanted to make it clear that we're well within compliance of the law. Our bus drivers are paid, are compensated on a daily rate based on the kind of route they drive. Their responsibilities for that route, and they know going in, when they come to us and agree to get a CBL, private license, that as a part of their route, they have to, and this part is required by law, they have to pull a pre-trip on the bus and a post-trip. They have to go around the bus and inspect certain things, that's part of the training they go through. They're also required to check the bus out before they leave or lock it up, before they leave for the day, to make sure there are no students in the back, maybe one fell asleep or sweep the bus out. Part of their route requires that they fuel the bus. Depending upon the kind of route they drive, some fuel the bus once a week, some fueled it twice a week. And in the winter, because it's also against the law to have snow on the top of a vehicle before they leave the yard, they do have to take a snow rake and clean off the top. We ran this by our attorney again, I've done this in the past, and he tells us we are well within labor laws regarding how we're paying our bus drivers. Karen, for example, we have two types of, basically two types of routes. A double round trip means the bus driver goes out in the morning, picks up middle school, high school kids, brings them to the academy or the middle school, and then goes back out and gets the elementary kids. We have a single round trip type of route where the bus driver either goes out and gets high school, middle school kids and brings them back and does not go out again, or goes out and gets elementary school kids, brings them back, and then the reverse when they're going home. So it's one of two types. We do have a third type that varies from time to time, and we assign them to the small buses, they're special education routes, and those change from time to time because of change in special education population. Sometimes, as I've mentioned in our budget update for you, we could have five or six special education students on a run, a family may move out, and that will reduce the amount of time the driver's out there. Two weeks later, a new special education student may come into the district, that may add more time than the bus driver originally had. So we do have somewhat of a flexible assignment of that type of route. But those bus drivers are also required to pre-trip, post-trip, clean the buses, and fuel the buses. Mrs. Monroe has put on there, for example, one of our double round trip examples. Bus driver gets eighty dollars and sixty-eight cents. Estimated time for that route is four hours and twenty-five minutes, or four and a quarter hours. So that person's hourly rate is eighteen dollars and ninety-eight cents, well within or above the minimum wage laws. So.
What's our question about what the payment came up?
Yes, not, not enough legally.
Well, Frank, could you just explain that last time?
The driver's actual drive time, oh, a while ago, some, I meet with the bus drivers and one of their concerns was there are times, particularly in the winter, where they might be out on the route and because of weather conditions, you know, maybe it's slippery so they're taking more time. A better example would be the bus driver goes out, knows that he or she has five children to drop off at a certain point, and parents are usually there. Well, this one time, there's a parent not there. So normally what the bus driver does is call back to the school. The, the, the bus driver will tell the, the home base, either at the elementary or middle school, little Mikey Bernardi's not, parents aren't here, I am bringing him back to the school. That will usually go over their normal route. So anything over fifteen minutes beyond their normal route, we pay them for it. Okay? Yes?
Dr. Murner, I guess I really don't know a lot about this, so they're, they're not hourly employees?
No.
Some kind of exempt employees?
No, they're not exempt.
Okay, there must be some classification.
It's a daily rate.
Yeah.
Through pay as a per diem. So assuming, we would advocate this, but assuming that a bus driver, typical route is four and a quarter hours, gets it done in three and three-quarter hours, because they may have a little bit of a heavy foot, and we wouldn't appreciate that, they would still get eighty dollars and sixty-eight cents. Versus if they worked four and a half hours, they'd get eighty, eighty dollars and sixty-eight cents. But if they worked four and four hours and thirty-one minutes, then it would start to kick in at an hourly rate of nineteen eighty-eight for every interval, was it hour?
Fifteen minutes.
So every fifteen-minute interval, they'd get a quarter of, you know, basically nineteen eighty-eight until they're done.
I wasn't aware of this classification.
Until, the question was raised to me and I raised it to Frank, I, I knew that there were per diems, but I never knew how they were treated.
Yeah.
You know, some districts do substitutes that way, you get a per diem for subbing for one day. Hospitals do it a lot, and they bring in staff to augment vacations and whatnot, so.
I have some questions about this, but what's the venue to continue?
If I could, if any of you would like to be bus drivers? We would truly appreciate it. We will pay for the training, we'll get you the CBL. Trainer's wonderful. You don't have to drive, can I please do this for you? You don't have to drive a full route. If you want to drive one just in the morning and have somebody else drive one in the afternoon, we'll split it with you.
This is what you get when you cut the apothecy budget.
Uh, how much do you get paid?
And you get to drive a really cool vehicle.
Right, because it's a wonderful place. Seriously, if you know somebody, have them call the office, we're always looking for drivers, always. Wonderful job.
Good job.
I had the opportunity.
Take it while you got it. Any additional?
No.
Good. Citizen participation, this is your opportunity before we start discussing the budget. Once the board starts to discuss the budget, it's then a board discussion, so we'll take as much input as we can, but at some point, we've got to do our work here too.
Right now.
I would, I would hope that we wouldn't have to institute a three-minute rule, so let's try it out.
All right, well, really quickly, where's the soil tank that you're talking about?
It's right up here.
Okay, spills.
Yeah, it's just out far in the ground.
All right, and then, just something that I've seen for a while in elementary school that I think is a big waste of money. We have some doors that have no strip between where the doors meet, theirs where coal air is freezing. It's the hallway by the cafeteria, the doorway on the far end of the building that they ask us to exit from when they're doing pickup in the afternoons. Neither one of them have weather stripping. And the cafeteria is always, always freezing.
Victor, do you know which door that is?
Sorry.
Okay.
It's been like that for a couple of years now.
Okay.
But oil is expensive and we're throwing it out.
Hey, if we can save a hundred bucks, it's a hundred more dollars. Okay, so weather stripping.
So that's great, because extra eyes are cool.
Yeah, and elementary school.
It's the set of doors down by third grade, past the afterroom and the caf, where the cafeteria is.
All right, okay. Victor knows where that is.
Budget update?
Yep.
You want to not jump in around the room?
Well, there's actually a new one for this meeting versus the finance meeting.
That was passed out?
No, hasn't been passed out yet. The board hasn't seen it yet. If you have a yellow copy, it's from the finance committee meeting that happened previous to this one, and we've made subsequent changes to that. So we'll pass out a copy of the new budget when the board gets it. The board hasn't even gotten it yet.
I was looking for the.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. No, Karen, she's looking for.
Oh, we passed her my possession, yeah, we passed it down what I had.
Yeah, we can get more if you would like.
What do you do?
Yeah, okay. We'll do that.
I was, I was at the finance committee meeting and I just made some notes. I first, I really want to thank Mr. Bernardi. He's, I'm going to single you out right now and then I'll single you out. So you stood up on your own and said, you challenged your group and said hypothetically what would happen if we came with a twelve percent increase, which was wonderful here. You also recall, not my passion singly as a parent at the meeting on Saturday, but your passion as a whole that seemed to bubble up organically in the need to decrease class sizes. And you were recalling suplex comments, I didn't say it at time, but suplex comments about how that one particular class has been large for several years and how you really advocated that. So I really wanted the public to know that you got it and we appreciate that. And we appreciate that the ability for you to hear those feelings that are extremely important. We operate on bare bones as it is. I mean, I do not send my daughter to the elementary school because it has fabulous technology and it's gourmet cafeteria and it's sparkling clean classrooms. I send her there because I believe in the public education. I believe that every child has a right to learn. I want my daughter to be challenged, I want her to be amongst other children of diversity, I want her to experience the education that I experience in a public school environment. And you do very well with what you have, I can imagine if we just could touch more and I appreciate that. So thank you so much for proposing that. I have other points, but I think my three minutes is up.
Okay. John?
I'll open that up here, and I guess what I want to discuss, aside from some particulars of what I heard at Saturday's meeting, about reform, which I thank you all that were able to attend for that. I feel like as a parent, as a member of the public, I'm always two steps behind in trying to get information. It's great that you're looking for public comment, but even at that meeting, the finance committee currently was a meeting just moments before the meeting started, and was trying to present some information, but there weren't any details. And that's very frustrating for me, and then you're all looking for our input, whereas I think a number of the board members themselves had seen what the finance committee had worked out of that one. Is there not a way to somehow make this process start earlier in the year, December or November or something, so that we can have? or something, so that we can have, as the public and as voters, intelligent things to say and ways to be a part of the process? It's very frustrating to me, even last year, when the board of finance, board of finance had proposed some comments about them. Everybody showed up at this meeting, but they didn't earlier. I'll show up at whatever meeting, it's not easy for me, as you can see, to show up on a weeknight, but I'll find a way to do it. But I need to know that there's a process here that's understandable, that there's time for input. It's got to be frustrating for you guys, too, to be trying to scramble something together to put out there to the public. So I think you need to work on that, but I think that as a whole, we need to be on a greater sense of that. Also, sort of pulling off what was talked about in the academic, regarding the academic meeting, regarding the list on it, I'm really concerned that we seem to be hopping year to year here without any real plan to look at what Woodstock schools could be given. Yes, money fell from the sky, but indeed, what we really want them to be, what we define excellence as, as community, and what our educators and our administration define excellence as. And I'd like that to be part of the budget that goes to the board of finance, and add them to it, if you will. My understanding is that that had happened in the past, it didn't happen last year. I'd like to see what a fully funded budget would look like. And if this is the budget that you guys feel is the one that is reasonable, keep us where we're at and push forward. But I'm concerned that a zero increased budget, anybody knows, if you get no raise this year, you're falling behind. And that's what I don't want to happen in my town. We're all struggling, I know that. One other quick thing regarding that meeting, I heard on WNY this morning, Thompson had a meeting, a joint meeting of board of education, board of finance, and board of select. And I know that the other groups were, quite at the Saturday's meeting, I think one member of board of finance showed up, this is a private citizen. But if Thompson can do it, Woodstock can do it. So let's really try to get that, it may not happen this year, but if Thompson can do it, and Woodstock can get that together, and get that meeting where we can really get some work done, and really get a picture of this one's opinion is this, this one's that. Because I think you guys did great work. You know, as silly as it may sound, figuring out that we're spending too much money laminating if the schools are doing it, probably it's happening in town halls, too. So let's all share that weight. A couple other quick things. Class size is really important. I don't know where that's developed in the conversation, but I am greatly concerned that fifth and sixth graders are going to have huge class sizes, again, going to next year. I mean, we don't have a major. That's a concern. I don't think that's acceptable. We can play your research, your research. Bottom line is, class size is something that the board of ed has control over in terms of academic success. Yes, there's a lot that goes on outside of school. We're going to still try to read the story before we get to bed tonight, but you can't control class size. And that's the part that you guys, you guys need to focus on, find a way to deal with. Technology and professional development, I'm very concerned. I would really like to see the details of a plan to farm out part of the technology work. Again, I work in that field, but I'm happy to help, look at it with a critical eye. I'm not going to say it can't work, but you've got to be real careful when you farm out something. I would definitely say that Mr. Olson should be involved absolutely from the start, and that anything that happens there. And just something that I think is frank out of your commission about, you know, I mentioned that I'd love to see a language program start up. We started the after-school language club, and that's, it's going great, but it's not in place of something that should be part of the curriculum. And you mentioned that, you know, if you had a grant writer, maybe we could find the money to, you know, to fund a whole program like that. Well, that should be part of the board's agenda, is to find a grant writer, or find people in the community room to do that kind of work. Reach out, do some additional outreach. When we put together the Spanish book, we actually did an online survey. Very cheap to do these things. We got pretty good hit rate. We got almost a hundred. I thought that's thoughtful. Everybody else told me it was amazing for Woodstock. And you're doing more, like headlines and so forth, more people are online. This is a way to connect with people. We learned some stuff, and we did that. I'd be happy to share that. It's cheap, it's like ten or twenty bucks a month. I'll be as good as I can. So get more community input. We're here to help you guys. We're here to go back for you, and we're here to battle board of finance. So don't be afraid of that. Go for it. Parents are behind you. That's my comment.
No problem, I understand. Michelle?
Just a couple things that I think John said a lot of stuff I'm going to say, so I'm going to just make it as possible. But that of concern to me that came out of the budget forum that I don't know how been addressed, our class size. And also going forward with the zero percent increase budget yet again. I know that we're dealing with declining enrollment, but if you have to make cuts from budget despite of time enrollment, it just means you don't have enough money to do what you need to do. So just employ you to go forward to the board of finance with the best budget that you possibly can. And with regards to the technology assistant, yesterday I was in the office of the middle school, and a teacher came in and said, Paula, I need to talk to Bob Olson. I know he was just in my office, and I said, and she was all in a tizzy because her computer wasn't working again. And I'm not just saying you should hire a technology assistant. I'm just saying that if you're not going to fund that, that is kind of an urgent thing that needs to be addressed. It's something that comes up all the time. So please make sure that it is addressed in some manner if you can get it in the budget. And finally, as a way to save money, we did this at a school that my son went to, that I actually did it from school. We did this with the PTO. We went paperless. And not only did you save a tremendous amount of money, you significantly improved the communication that you have with your population, your trying to reach. And it does cost money to go paperless, but the cost that it costs to implement is much less than it is that you spend on paper and stamps and all that kind of stuff. So just something to think about and look at.
I just wanted to say something in regards to the meeting on Saturday, when we were looking at your proposed areas of possible cuts. One area that I didn't notice till later was the professional development area, maybe ten thousand out. And I would just keep that in mind, because you may have to cut whether it's gifted, or if you have to, you know, if you have to have fingers for class sizes, you need to look at that, because the number one indicator of a child's success are their teachers. And I know they have professional development, but you're going to have new teachers, and you have other teachers, you know, new topics come out, and I feel that's very important. So just keep an eye on that, depending on where you need to.
Board members have the letter that I wrote prior to the forum. I'd like to read it so that it goes into the record. I'll read it quickly. Do your members of the board of ed, and to attend the forum this Saturday, please consider my comments and citizen's participation as you make determination on the budget you bring to the board of finance. Most important, please make it your first priority to advocate for the children of the Woodstock public schools. This is your greatest obligation and your primary constituency. Other constituencies in the town have an active voice. The students have you. Please bring the board of finance a budget that reflects the real needs of the school system. This budget should address staffing, programs, technology, infrastructure, administrative support, transportation, and materials required to deliver a good education to Woodstock students in the 21st century. This budget submission is the only place the board of ed has this opportunity to educate the board of finance, parents in the community, and to advocate for the requirements to help our children be prepared as they move into high school and to be successful as they compete in the world. Don't sell them short. Please retain our good teachers and coordinators and invest in their ongoing professional development. Give every consideration to the crucial role that our teacher aides, our teacher aides in the classroom, supporting students and leveraging teacher capacity. Retain our coordinators who ensure consistent, integrated delivery of learning standards in each grade level in the classroom, and who support our technology. Quality instruction is a primary factor in student achievement. Do not bring forward a budget which disinvests in our teaching staff and its support. Restore art fully to our seventh and eighth graders. Switch the order. Art as a curricular subject for every student is foundational to the development of an expressive language, innovative and disciplined habits of mind, and to the 21st century skills of creative problem solving and critical thinking. The resource requirements of the state mandated SRBI should not be plucked from our art and spice programs. The resources for SRBI should be accounted for and funded with our other state mandated, including special education requirements. Please fully retain a vibrant gifted and talented program at both the elementary and middle school. Academic enrichment is a relatively low-cost, high-impact means to provide a creative and challenging curriculum for high-achieving students. By offering the program at both schools, all students are given opportunities to develop their capacities in innovative approaches to learning. Please avoid responding to budget pressure with fiscally tempting but short-sighted reductions at our already lean administrative infrastructure. Our superintendents and principals' offices are extremely lean, given the size of our district and the increasing workload they've handled over time. In recent years, the board of ed researched whether it could streamline these offices and move to a part-time superintendent. Board of ed found that these moves would be both fiscally and educationally imprudent. Woodstock has one of the lowest administrative overhead structures in the state. Moreover, these positions help to ensure tight expense management and high-quality service in areas such as transportation, special ed, health insurance, revenue grants management, and grants application and management. Under the administration of our full-time superintendent, our students achieve above-average and improving results, as measured by comparative CMT scores and trends, and a cost per student well below average. Further reductions to our administrative offices will increase costs and diminish educational quality over time. Everybody understands these are tied to economic times with fiscal constraints, including the limitations of Proposition 46. Our students don't get to wait for better economic times to prepare for high school and their future. Disinvesting in education is short-sighted and diminishes Woodstock community as a whole. Please advocate strongly and forcefully for our students' educational needs. I was able to sit in the finance committee meeting. I think, you know, I'm pleased there are some constructive suggestions that will come out of that tonight, but I am still hearing an approach to budgeting that starts with the limitations, the external limitations imposed by the board of finance, rather than starting with the requirements of a responsible 21st century education. So I continue, as others have, to urge you to advocate forcefully to the board of finance and to the community for a full gifted and talented program, and advocate for the development indeed of a foreign language program. Please ask Dr. Baron to develop, as he has in years past, a budget that includes, or an addendum that includes what the needs of a good school are. We have attached that to our budget. We've outlined things, both infrastructure as well as teaching resources, including foreign language, that at least becomes a placeholder to the community of what a good school should have. I'm going to let others talk, but I have more to say on SRBI and art.
As co-president of WAT, I want to encourage the board not to cut any of the staff. That was a large sacrifice the teachers took as a hard squeeze, as a lot of money that they will not be realizing, not just this year, not just next year, but for years to come. I think the staff is at a minimum. I think that when we move more staff, maybe that we have more costs. As a sixth-grade teacher, I'm concerned that the class size going in at this moment will be possibly twenty-six students next year. Every summer over the last, at least four summers, we've had quite an influx into sixth grade. Back over the summer, we were contacted, we went from four home rooms to five. And I wonder what will happen in this coming year, once again, if we have more plus students. I'm actually having difficulty fitting enough guests in my science lab to service that many students. So I am very concerned about cutting any staff, because I feel like we really do need to add staff. I think part of our scheduling changes from year to year has to do with trying to get enough staff members to teach all these things at these schools.
I just, I have a letter that someone gave me that they would like me to read, but I just wanted to say that first, the teachers and the staff personally in the elementary school I've witnessed, and I know it at the middle school from friends in Stanley, are what really make the school run. They are the magic of the school, and we need to support that. We don't need to just listen to what the board of finance would recommend to us. If we listened to what was recommended to us, we wouldn't be who we are today, we wouldn't be where we are. We need to challenge ourselves. I want you to challenge, to have the courage and the conviction to challenge the board of finance, to go up to them and say, this is what we're requesting. So you may have to be turned down, you may have to come back, you may have to roll up your sleeves and try again, but that's what you're here for. And I want you to know that my child's education, as it's safe here, as are all of these parents, the teachers can't take it any longer. It's not, it's not a good practice to ask a teacher to teach twenty-six, twenty-seven students. And the burnout will happen, and it will affect us all. So that, I appreciate what you're doing, but please, I know that what's coming, what you're going to present, and I know there'll be some feedback on some of those things. I appreciate what you've started with, having been witness to the previous meeting, but I just want to make a plea, reach farther, have that courage and the integrity to do that for the public. Now, I'd like to read a letter from Andrew and Colleen Massey, they're Woodstock residents. They asked me to read it aloud. Is that okay?
Quickly, please.
I'll try. Dear members of the Woodstock Board of Education, we are unable to attend tonight's meeting and appreciate you reading into the record and considering our comments as you decide budget priorities for the education of Woodstock students. Stimulating creativity, encouraging critical thinking, and exploring beyond typical boundaries are essential if the United States is to realize the brightest possible future. Limiting students' opportunities or closing off portals of to learning are disservices to our students and community. I appreciate that financial considerations require a measure of compromise. However, debate would be well-spent discussing ways to bolster programs that really make our students think on their own, draw from various aspects of their knowledge base, and inspire creativity and problem solving. Serious debate, broad awareness, and public involvement should serve well to help guide such precedent-setting decisions. Please, take pride in the successful programs that support, encourage, and challenge and enlighten our student community by conserving number one, support our teachers and aides in their continued professional development. Two, art programs at all grade levels. Number three, gifted and talented program at the elementary and middle school. Show your collective strength by funding these priorities. Thanks for your hard work and dedication to the students of Woodstock. You are the voice of our young citizens, and we appreciate your steadfast leadership. Sincerely, Andrew and Colleen Massey. I just want to get this out as my opening for reality. I guess it's a good idea, so some of us want to go. I wanted to just kind of go on top of what a lot of the other people here are saying, especially regarding the gifted and talented program. I understand that sometimes cuts need to be made, that it seems like a good choice to move staff around instead of adding a person. You have to take into account a person is actually qualified, that you're going to run that new class. And also to focus on what they're doing now, maybe changing what they're doing now with the talented, but keeping it as a separate entity. Even though the elementary school has less kids, or has participating attention in talent, I think it's still important that those less kids have the opportunity to gain the knowledge, to gain the extra attention, to gain the extra skills that they get with this program, including broadening their mind with extra work, extra knowledge that their other classmates might not be getting, because they're not there yet. And then they're looking at, their peers can say to them, oh, well, you go to gifted and talented. What is that all about? Maybe that there's other kids something to reach for, because they want that extra attention, not negative attention that they might feel, oh, well, I have to have more and more. That other person might say, you know, I want to be part of that other class. I want to go to gifted and talented. I want to use my knowledge and get smarter as a kid. I mean, that's what my goal is for my kids, to want to learn more. So I just want to encourage everybody here, and encourage everyone to change and look at that. Maybe not take away the gifted and talented, but still keep an open mind of maybe revamping the program, so the teachers at the elementary school can be happy about what they see, but not to put an extra burden on the classes already there, so that teachers have to take in next year. If there is no gifted and talented, those teachers are now going to have to take in that extra time, but they're going to have to spend more time with the kids that are bored, the kids twiddling their brains. So that's just what I wanted to focus on. Thanks.
I just had a quick comment, and I know that it's been talked about already, and it's the class size. And I basically just commented on our daughter, she's in fourth grade now. She was in the multiage of Michigan Public Shala for the last couple of years, and she absolutely loves school, you know, great homework, you know, very inquisitive, and she just, she wants to learn. This year, being in her class with twenty-seven other students... This year, being in her class with 27 other students, we see her stressing and struggling in certain things, and she comes to us and she asks us, you know, to help with the homework, and, you know, we'll look at it and say, "All right, so, you know, what did your teacher say?" And when she's telling us that the teacher didn't have time to explain it to her, that's telling me that there's a problem.
I have a letter from the Anna Richard Dillco, citizens of Woodstock. We are writing as parents who will have three children in the Woodstock public schools of that 2012, 2013 school year, kindergarten, fourth and fifth grade. They are concerned with the class sizes. Our two oldest are currently in class sizes of 26. We were in attendance at the BOE's annual forum on Saturday. The board mentioned studies that went okay, the current class sizes, and we quickly found a lot of evidence contrary, contrary. Basically, they said, "Smaller class sizes, children obtain higher test scores, participate more in school, demonstrate improved behavior, have teachers able to involve parents more, have teachers less involved with management, and more with learning, have more opportunities to engage and learn, and retain many benefits of early class size reductions in later school years, are held back less, are referred less for special ed, exit special ed sooner, and graduate at increased rates. In addition, both of our older children qualify for enrichment services. Students that are hold for enrichment are given the opportunity to learn at their own speed, not be limited to what they already know and understand, work with abstract concepts and creative, reflective, analytical ideas that the mainstream classroom may not be ready for. We are concerned that attempting enrichment education within the confines of an already overcrowded classroom will not be successful. Sincerely, Anna Richard Dillco."
Is it possible to get a copy of that? Because we have copies of the other ones, but just not this one for the record. Thank you. Yep.
Thank you for acknowledging. I wanted to make a comment as far as the earlier discussion on the academic committee. I'm not sure how many folks know this, but within the last two weeks, Governor Lloyd Kupfer made a six-point priority for the legislature, basically redefining educational reform in Connecticut. Although it's too early to know how this is going to pan out, if you have been following what was going on with Lloyd and what he supports, he's extremely strong supporter of public education. He's been a gentleman, he's been publicly reported that, went through a public system in Connecticut as a special needs student and has risen above many, many challenges in his life. And so I would, I would say that he would find it, you know, incredibly passionate in individual education. So I bring that up because the priorities that Kupfer brought to the legislature right now potentially could ask you as board to address some academic things that we may not have ever had to explore. So I think that you have to keep that in mind. I see outside of the budgeting role we play, that particular line to guard to educate our students is absolutely critical, so I wanted to put that out there. The second thing I wanted to say is that, living in councils, I have and come to many meetings over the years and have a strong personal connection to the board, I, I feel that I've learned a lot, and, and one thing I've learned is that, you know, history repeats itself over and over and over again in this town. There's not a lot of surprises. The surprises often come down to what particular line item is the one that's going to get zapped this time around, or, you know, this is what the Board of Finance said to us, or this is what they're going to do to us. I guess what I would say is that, you know, there's a reason why history repeats itself. There, you know, the situation and the things that are happening haven't changed much, but I, I think it's worth bringing up that, I think a board has to stand strong in their commitment to represent the students and the children of this town with absolute effort. If you listen to people talk about money all the time, you're going to lose your way. I truly and passionately believe that. You will lose your way. You have to focus on what educational systems are doing that are right in every aspect of, in every part of our state, and ask yourself, what can we do to make it better here, not the line item that I know you're going to look at. Let's ask the questions first. Let's go forward with what we really, really need to give our kids, and then we go from there. We flip this around every year, or almost every year, and it's very distressing to me. So I challenge you to do that, please, this year, and go to the Board of Finance with what we believe is truly the best possible budget that we need to educate our kids. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tara McCullough-Murphy, and I just moved here recently, last August. I have three children in the school system, two in the elementary, one in the middle school. Part of the reason why I moved to Woodstock, my husband and I, was for quality education and some of the successes that the Woodstock School System does have. I would hate to see many of those things jeopardized because of the budget. With any corporation business, even Board of Education, Board of Finances, a good management strategy and practice is to listen to those on the front lines who know firsthand the needs of the organization. I ask strongly that you consider and listen to the opinions and the experiences of our teachers, our assistant teachers, our principals, to find out what the consequences of these budget cuts would be and how it's going to directly impact our children and the quality of their education. I'm opposed to budget cuts that will cut positions within our school. These positions are very important, vital positions. With class sizes, 26 and 27 students, I strongly feel cutting staff positions will have a negative impact on students and their quality of education, and it's going to impact our schools as a whole. It's going to impact the teachers, the morale, and, but most importantly, their ability to teach effectively in an equality manner. So again, please consider the value of the opinions of the front-line employees and who know what's needed best for our students. Thank you.
Can I have a good?
It seems almost silly to mention yet again the importance of reducing the class sizes. It's hard for me to imagine anybody in this room would argue that we need smaller class sizes. I was here personally a couple of times last year advocating for smaller class sizes, and you can imagine my shock and dismay at the first of the year when my third grader came home, there were 28 children in her class, and she said, "Mommy, I can hardly move in my classroom. There's kids on either side of me, and we can't fit through the desks." So I, I don't know what happened between, you know, those conversations last year where everybody agreeing that class size was a priority to 27, 28 children in classrooms. I hear in Patna, from friends that I know, the average class size in third grade is 19 and 20 students. I wonder, how does Patna do that, and Woodstock can't seem to make that happen? I don't know what needs to be done to voice our concern louder, to, you know, we should be voicing these concerns louder. It is completely unacceptable to have 28 students in the third grade. How that teacher does it, I don't know. I have no idea. She's, she's insane. And it's especially critical now when there's, I would compare for CMTs. This is the first time third graders are going to be going through CMTs, and I really question how prepared they are for them, and we're really going to see the results of the test scores. I have a lot of children, so I have a second issue. You know, I happen to be the parent of a gifted student, and I can tell you firsthand, and this is something we have learned through the years, is that they truly have special needs. And just as you wouldn't ignore a child who had difficulties learning, you don't want to ignore the needs of a child who is gifted. He's nine years old, he's in the fifth grade, he's doing ninth-grade work. What would happen to him if the gifted program went away and he was put in a classroom with 28 children doing fifth-grade work? We literally have to pull them out of the school. It would be an impossible situation. But really, the point being, we have to recognize that he's not alone. These children truly have special needs, and I think it's our obligation to address these needs. And, you know, I, I question, don't we have a mandate to treat these gifted children as special needs students? No, I wish, I wish that were true. It's, it's just, you know, very sad to think that their, their special needs would be ignored.
As a former board member, I sympathize and empathize with the difficult situation you guys are faced with, and I hope that you've got some great news for us this evening. I also, after watching the budget forum on Saturday explaining that, I am concerned that you're a little ahead of yourselves in terms of the process of developing the budget. And I feel that right now, what we're fighting for is program preservation, and this is really something that happens later when the Board of Finance tells you what the budget is going to be. And I think that that is, in the six years I've been with the Board of Ed, the Board of Finance never had trouble telling us what the amount of money was going to be. And I would really encourage you to, to get beyond program preservation and think about the needs of a good school. As Lindsay mentioned, there is a list out there, and we have attached as addendums to the Board of Ed's budget for many years, and I think that should be added again. It includes things like a language program. It includes things like an assistant principal in the middle school. It includes structural needs that the school has as well. And there, there are a growing group of needs, and it's important that that come forward every year so the town people and the Board of Finance is aware that there are significant deficits that are not being covered in the budget. And in terms of bringing forward a budget creatively, I'm hoping to hear some more about the SRBI tonight, because I do think that that is a mandate that can be an escape valve outside of the Constitution 46. I know it's not much of an education money, but it is a mandate, and there has been no legal opinion on SRBI previously because it's a new program, it's a new mandate. And I would encourage you, the Board of Ed, to be bold, take that forward as a separate item outside of the regular budget, because it is a state mandate, it should not be succumb, it should not succumb to restrictions of the Constitution 46. So hopefully that's something you can do. And I wonder if there are other mandates out there that we might want to bring forward as well. The other two things I would touch, or one more thing I want you to touch on is, we've had, and when I was a board member, there was monthly presentations by members of the teaching staff as, you know, their progress, each class would come forward and talk about their programs, and Tony would ask them at the end of our presentation, "What's the things you guys need, what do you need?" And the first thing they would always say is class size. We need to keep the costs small. So those are your teachers telling you right there what they need. And I think the second thing they always said, and I've heard quite frequently, was a tech assistant. If they get stuck in their classroom and the smart board, the technology they have doesn't work, and Mr. Olson has been called five times at once, and they can't move forward with their lesson plan. And so those are the two things that we heard over and over and over again from the teachers, and they are the ones, they're experts, they're on the ground, they know what they need. Administration has brought that forward, it's a need of the school. I know you had some suggestions of how you might get around that. I mean, you're going to hear the ideas that you have, but the teachers are saying that's what they need, and I think it's important to listen to that. And again, and that goes without saying, I don't, I don't want to see any progress in this. I don't want to see the arc of this initiative in the last year, I don't want to see that one set back in again. Gifted and talented is a non-starter, I would agree. Students need those programs, those kids need those programs, and so I would really encourage you to keep the program and start thinking ahead and pushing a budget forward that's going to provide the school with what they need. Thank you.
I'd like, thank you for advocating for our smaller class sizes, I appreciate that. One of the things that I, I'm thrilled to be able to maybe help the academic committee, because one of the things I heard before when I was there Saturday is Wendy Duran saying that the CMTs are going to be going away in a couple of years, and that this is all going to become computerized. We need to start being proactive and planning for that for our kids, for them to be able to sit in front of the computer for how much, how long, a week at a time, these kids are doing the CMTs, you know, a couple hours each day, for them to feel comfortable doing that. And maybe on that committee, we can think of some creative ways to maybe help them start preparing for that and being proactive, instead of having it come and say, "Oh, my goodness." You know, that's why I think that the need for the computer tech might be even more. We need to do that. We really need to start thinking about when those CMTs are not up here. The other thing I just wanted to do, to say too, was, you know, the class sizes. I am, my children are in above the class. They were proud of, fortunate, fortunate to be with Mr. Chisano and Multi-Age in 2021 kids. Well, when they got to third grade last year, there was 27. This year, they're in fourth grade, class of 27. And even though academically both of them do very well, it's a big class. And I have seen in some of the work coming home that my husband and I really do need to pick up a lot more slack than we ever have, which we're okay to do, that's fine. But for those parents out there who maybe don't have some of the time they have, for those children out there that don't have some of the parents that maybe can spend that kind of time with them, I'm here to advocate for them too. When I was leaving tonight to come here, I ran upstairs to say goodnight to my kids and to remind them, "I went to take a shower," and, you know, Daddy Paul said, "Oh, I wish we had more." And I said, one of my children said to me, "Where you going?" And I said, "I'm going to the Board of Ed meeting, I want to fight for you to have smaller class sizes." And he said, "Mommy, why do you have to fight? It's the right thing to do." Why do we have to fight? It's the right thing to do. We all know it.
Oh, I just, kind of summarizing what everybody else is saying, but in a different way. I already see erosion happening and falling as a patient. I can give you examples of children in my kids' classes who aren't, they're not meeting the necessary requirements for that grade, they're getting passed on to the next grade, and they can't possibly catch up to that grade. So it's like a waterfall effect now. By the time they get to middle school, they can't, they can't even function. So, you know, if you've got kids that aren't meeting multiplication requirements in the fourth grade, they're moving on to fifth grade, how are they going to be able to do algebra? You know, it's, it's happening now. My, my daughter's teacher last year in fifth grade never gave book reports, not one book. Can you imagine a fifth-grade teacher never giving a book? I said, "Why? Why aren't we having..." My daughter can handle like lots of book reports. "Why?" He said, "Well, those of the kids in the class can't even put together sentences, you know, into a paragraph." I'm like, "Well, fifth grade? Are you, are we ready to sign off on that? Are we happy with that?" And so if we cut the budget further, I mean, further enlarge the class size, it won't be a good course. My daughter was in gifted and talented, that's his cut. That was, she was now put into a class that is the higher learning class. Well, it's 20 kids or so, as opposed to, I don't know how many that are actually at that level. So there's a lot of kids that just can't possibly keep up with that. So basically, that higher learning class is now functioning at the lowest level of that higher learning, which means it's not really a higher learning class anymore. So it's just, it's eroding. It's, it's happening now, and it's just going to continue to happen with further enlargements and cuts. I, I, I'm not saying the cuts can't happen, I'm just saying we need to have a plan of action. How are we going to prevent this from happening? Stop the erosion? How do we, how do we engage the parents more, engage the students? I mean, some of these students, they're just not participatory learners, they're not engaged. So how do we help them get engaged? I think that's where, where I think the Board of Ed needs, needs to step in and help out, because the teachers are stressed out, the administration's stressed out, and I already see this erosion happening. So let's, let's rip onto it and not let it go further, because it's in those elementary years, in those early middle school years, where they get that foundation. If they don't get the foundation, it's all lost for these kids. They can't possibly, and now we're spending the most, we're spending tons of money on the minimum state requirements, and it just seems like a ton of money is being pumped in the minimum state. Why? Because children are being passed from year to year, they're not really getting the minimum requirements. So I feel like if we had a plan, we could rise above that and set aside higher than just the minimum, and maybe spend less on that and more on, on, on further education.
I know our dear folks, I'm just going to, just what Kirsten said about going through right now, limiting preservation, program preservation, you know, just keep in mind, like you all know, that if you don't go to the Board of Finance and, you can't go back and ask for more after you ask. So if they say no to what you're bringing, then what are you going to be doing? How much more difficult is that going to be than where you are now? If you're starting from a place where you usually end, that doesn't seem like it's probably the wisest way to approach things. That's just my thing, not criticizing you.
And just to echo Malita, I teach at QBCC, and unfortunately, many of my students, I have a very learning group, from adult learners to, to high school graduates, don't know how to put a sentence together. They can't put a paragraph together. I'm teaching them a beginning, a middle, and an end, and that's not my job as their communications instructor. And it's sad, I don't want my child's future to be there. I know that I can spend time with her, tutor her, to foster her education, but there are parents who can't, or don't know how to, don't have the resources, or... are parents who can't or don't know how to, don't have the resources, or whatever. The child falls through the cracks. We have to catch them. We have to stop them now. We can't just sustain them. So.
I'd just like to echo kind of what Michelle said about coming forward with a budget that isn't your ending budget. You know, go forward. We know every year the Board of Finance says, "Please come to zero to one," and we look at this back and forth thing, and we're afraid if we don't come up with a zero budget, they're going to get mad at us and lose, you know, to things. And it's like this little power play going on, and I find that so frustrating. I'm sure it's you too. But we can't just keep cutting things and hoping that we're just making, we're just going to get by. And I'm worried because the class sizes being so large, that there are a lot of those children who are performing at an average level, that maybe are above average. We probably, we have a lot more kids who get to be counted if they weren't jammed into class of 27. And, you know, you know, if I knew my son was going to be born in a bubble year, maybe I would have threw off Abby for a couple of years still as a low year, but I didn't realize that.
You understand my kids, right?
You know, and then I might, I put my daughter in a bit of a bubble year too, so, you know, that's frustrating to me. And I, I sub in this school K through eight, so I see a lot of these kids who are, you know, I've worked with some fourth graders, then when I go to fifth and sixth grade, I think, "Holy cow, I can't imagine this one being able to do this." I see where the room is just so crowded, and the teacher is like, you know, trying to, you know, keep this one in line over here and give some individual attention over here, explaining things more. And then there's two kids over there who are kind of like wondering what to do next because they're done. And it's just, it's just too stressful for, I can't imagine being a teacher having that year after year after year. My son was in a big third grade class this, last year, 26, and that teacher now has 27 this year. I can't imagine how she feels at the end of the day. She must be exhausted because the kind of teachers we have are so dedicated to the kids, and they want to give them individualized attention every day, and they don't have that opportunity. That must be the most frustrating thing in the world, and we're going to lose our talented teachers, and that's my other fear. You know, okay, my kids are going to be done with third grade, but there's future generations of third graders coming up here. Who are we going to be able to provide them with for instruction? Will all our really great teachers all be, you know, leaving us? Because it's just too difficult to work in that situation. And some of those classrooms are really teeny tiny, and you have so many desks jammed in there that the kids can't get around. But I just, I hope that you strive to put forward a budget that will be best for the kids and then, you know, deal with Board of Finance. I mean, we'll keep trying to get more and more people at that meeting to back you up. It's not fair to the kids. I mean, Woodstock's a great town, it has a great educational system. We want our kids to go off to college and to come back and live here. Why will they if this whole thing is falling apart? We have to, we have to be a leader. Thank you.
All right. Oh, I'm sorry. No, it's okay.
I agree with everybody about the class size, but I was going to give a little more specific, hooky, of the reductions here. And even talking about computer tech, what kind of chances that we should go to QBCC to their computer program and say, "Do you have someone that would like to intern?" That could pay more some responsibility to exploring a program to this computer that took Mr. Olson, you know, nine months to do. Because I would think that that would be a great thing, like somebody's resume. And maybe we could get somebody out. I swear that some of you QVC's that say, "Hey, I got this kid, he's fabulous, he's not working," you can have him for six months, and then you go get a college credit for it.
To answer your question specifically, I think it was, correct me if I'm wrong, Frank, maybe the finance meeting, Adam, 26th of the sixth, one of them, where we actually asked the administration to look into either that or getting kids from the academy to come down after school to do that sort of, for lack of a better term, maintenance type thing that, you know, Bob's doing this, and then all of a sudden he gets a call, he's going to go to this classroom because this is broken. If we could put him more in a role of doing really a couple of things. One, integrating technology into the classroom better than we do today because we have made a significant investment in technology across the district. And two, being able to respond to those types of things quicker in doing that. We don't have a formal plan for that. It's something that we're still investigating. Either way, if we use an internship from QBCC or we use one from the academy, it probably costs us nothing. And, you know, as long as we can get that type of thing done, we're still waiting for an answer on that one. But to specifically address that, it already came up, actually, I think, the one that brought it up.
Yes, it, yeah, I was just looking for this. If we could do that, this, you know, and save $53,000.
And still get the services.
Is there also other places within the system that we could somehow get interns to come in? And QB is such a great resource, just on the road, and it's a great place to go and learn. And I think, I think that there is support community, and if we can access that, that could be really. And then one other question. Have you ever considered, and I'm not sure if I need to do this, somehow send out a survey at the beginning of the year saying to parents, "What are the most important things? What are the things about school teaching that we really are passionate about? Is it class size? Is it gifted and talented? Is it art? Is it music? What is it that's that you care about so deeply that you don't want to ever see have? Or, you know, this is, you know, this is my hit list." And so you can see where we are. You know, if you care most about class sizes, and after that, then we care about this, and then this, and then this, and then this. And then you know ahead of time, instead of coming here, you know, two or three months before budget season, saying, "Ah, I wonder what we could have that people aren't going to be upset about or as upset about."
I think that's a great suggestion, and I would say that's now the perfect topic for the academics to need to figure out how we would do that and to design a survey.
And I would add to that survey, what can you do to help us with the schools? Because after Saturday's forum, yes, I did go home and talk to Mr. Fleck, who's a network engineer at Staples, and say, "Do you think you could do some upgrades for Mr. Olson? Maybe a couple hours on a Saturday?" And he said he would be happy to. And so.
We'd love that support.
So, I mean, maybe what we should do with that survey is say, "Okay, if you're out there in the community, what can you maybe help us out with?" Because like I said, Mike Frank said, "Sure, I'd be happy to go in one Saturday a month in the morning and do some upgrades for him," or whatever. And there are plenty of other people in this community I know.
We would love that.
That do networking.
Absolutely.
So it's Frank M. Fleck, and he'll be happy to.
You got that, Sarah?
Francis White, too, said he would be more than happy to.
We're in, we're in, yes, we're in economics. You know, this is not an easy time. So I think we have to sometimes think outside the box. We have a wonderful community here of very talented people who I think would be very happy to want to be in.
I volunteer, Rob's Lawrence, also.
Thank you.
My husband is also a computer genius, and he loves when I volunteer.
We're giving our husbands up.
Is my list up there someplace? Because over here, I swear. Has everybody?
Yes.
You already wrote these things down?
Our name and number.
And what about you? Did you write down Frank M. Fleck?
I'm on there. I'm on there.
But why, why did we know this was a need? Had I known it was a need, you know, I'd have sent the husband along time.
I would have too.
Yeah, when I heard that at the meeting on Saturday, I thought, "Holy cow, I know that these six guys that I could have gotten on a Sunday, Saturday morning to come and help him." It wouldn't have been taking them two months.
Right.
So, I mean, put up that wish list.
I got that elsewhere in the notes here. I've been taking pretty diligent notes as to what everybody has said, so.
Just something from a possibly legal standpoint, with the number of students in the room, it's been sounding like some of them are pretty crowded. Does that match with the size of the room in the higher class? Is that a concern?
Well, I can tell you, sitting here tonight, we typically get the average class size. I don't ever remember hearing any particular teacher having 28 kids, so that's something that we'll start to look at, especially if kids can't make it around the desks and things like that.
I'm sorry, I really have to jump in. You're not aware that there's 28 children in the classroom?
You see what we see. We get, we get a chart. We have a chart that shows average class sizes. So, you know, it's the number of kids divided by the number of sessions. So it may be that one teacher has 27 kids, but another one has 23. Typically, we see the average, so I don't know what Mrs. Billings has versus, I'm trying to think, another third grade teacher.
I know that, I know.
But your kids are in that school.
No, that's not why I know that.
I'm sorry, Victor.
Right now, I'm in a class that's 27. Do they see that?
No, it was, it was 28. They lost a student, so yes, it is 27, but I understand it was 28 from day one through most, most of the year, but 27, 28, you know.
And I don't know that because my kids are in the school. I know that because I distributed something with district approval at school, and I went to the office and asked for the list. Many kids are in each class. It's not that hard to find that out.
What I advise you to do, especially for the people on the board who don't have children, first of all, I commend you for stepping forward into this forum, this thankless job that you volunteered for six years of your life for. Go to the elementary school, go to the middle school. Mr. Flomage and Mr. Todes can arrange for a visit for you to go in, pull up a chair, and sit in a classroom and watch. There's nothing like a true experience. Take a little field trip, if you will. Go in. At Performing Arts, I'm on the Board of Performing Arts of Northeast Connecticut. We are encouraged, we are not required, but we're encouraged as volunteers to go into the classroom to understand classroom experience of the New Higgins Symphony Orchestra until you see a cellist play a cello to set class of third graders who have no idea what it really means. So I encourage you to walk into those classrooms, open the door to a second grade class, go into Ms. Engelman's classroom, see what she's doing with sign language, sit in the room, see how my daughter is four feet tall, sitting at this little tiny desk, trying to make her work fit on her desk because she's so large for this little second grade desk. See how it all works. Put it into some context. You're going to be presenting this. We talk at night on paper, at night on paper, at night. It's like there's no context to it. We're in a beautiful music room where there's tons of space. Go to the elementary school, and you can see how the Massey's child sits directly next to the Dearborn's child, elbow to elbow, to do their work all day long. It's very difficult. I invite you, please, all of the four of you. Mr. Todes, what do you want to add?
I'd just like to say that I think we actually did look at a chart of class sizes reaching the class size last year. And we were, we were very concerned about, I think it was the, maybe it was the fourth grade or fifth grade.
27, 36 each.
Right, and we were concerned about that, and in fact, one part of our initial class was a major teacher that gathered. On Thursday, I see her about the March class size in third grade, and we have not seen a chart of, you know, how many kids are in each class so far this year, as far as I know.
Yeah, we only see the aggregate, not a per individual teacher level.
I think I was at the meeting last year, and I think what was that compared to me as a parent, is I knew certain grades had higher numbers, and I just thought that just one class had more kids that year. But what happened was in the second grade, they had five classes. When you go up to third grade, you're down to four classes, and when you're fourth grade. So the numbers really aren't changing because all of a sudden you've got a bunch of people.
It's the number of sessions.
It's the number of sessions, and that's, and I didn't realize that was a bump what they were talking about.
Yeah, yeah. So it's not like a bunch of new people just moved into the.
Oh, let's see, there is. Yeah, that, I think that was on.
When on Saturday's forum, when we saw the proposed numbers for next year, they took here in the fourth grade, the fourth grade, 155 teachers. But fifth and sixth grade, fifth grade actually went down. So my kids, they're at 27, next year it will be 25 or 26. And the sixth grade, the same thing, there were only four classes, very few.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, George, you're heading over.
I'd just like to ask you, as you're delivering your budget, that please do bring to the Board of Finance a budget that you really need. And I know in the letter said, "I'm talking to the private taxpayer, and I can't speak on behalf of the board." But I know personally, I would like to know what your needs are, and if there are state mandated costs like the SRBI, definitely like to see those identified. Prop 46 troces us quite a bit in this town, but that is one of the things it does allow for is those mandated costs. If you have capital expense items, we need to see those as well. So I totally encourage you to do that. And I know the letter said zero, and it's a rough year, it's a rebuild year, but Prop 46 still allows for a small increment, or even a rebuild year.
Thank you, George.
We will pick up the budget in a few minutes. Let's talk academy agreement. So, you know, this is on here, just as a reminder to folks, a couple of things have happened. You know, I guess we still don't have an agreement with the academy, but we've got the committee assembled on our side. If you have thoughts and ideas on something specific you'd like to see, please email it to me. We had that at the last meeting. They have assembled their committee as well. I had our meeting this morning with Kim Karen and Christine Twensson. They're getting together with a subset of their board, I guess, tomorrow morning and making sure that they are indeed ready to go. They feel as though they're ready to go to do it out. So I would expect us to start getting involved in this very quickly, like we've had over the last couple of years. So, you know, the message I got this morning was, "They think they're ready to go." I know we're ready to go, so give that some thought. I know this is budget season, but that's also something that's very important because that would be potentially as long as a 10-year agreement. It's not something that we want to just rush into. We want to take our time and think about it and do it right. So I ask that you folks think through that. HD. Something other than water. HD 2012, 2013 draft budget. And for those that were able to attend the finance committee meeting previous to this, please disregard your yellow copies. Green is the new color. And there's some making its way around. Where can I go? Oh, okay. I hadn't expected him to lead us through this, but okay.
I just feel you might want to wear it.
Yeah, I didn't know Steve was running out, too. All right, folks, you want to take a five-minute recess so that folks can refill water and use the facility if you so choose? 9:20, please. We've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, three misses. Is everyone in the ladies' room?
Oh, I'm glad I got them. Hey, that coffee had to go somewhere.
All right, folks, we're going to come back after the session. I'll remind folks that we still have a long agenda after this. Sorry about that. Okay. So, in, in front of you, you have the green sheet. This is the ones to follow. All previous versions are null and void. This is as hot off the presses as we can make it, because the Finance Committee met again tonight at six o'clock before this meeting. I'll point your direction to a couple of things. Number one, bottom of page one, lines fifty and fifty-one. So, what the Board of Fin, or what the Finance Committee of this Board has endorsed is, actually, starting on line forty-nine, I'm sorry, a recommended two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen budget of fifteen point nine million and change. As you guys know, I'm not a number kind of guy. I don't do sets. You know, basically fifteen point nine five million dollars, which represents an increase of two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. Give or take a couple of seconds here, which would be a one point six percent increase. We feel that's prudent. It, it does have some reductions, as you see there, starting on line four through line forty-four. Some of those, my term, will hurt more than others. I think we can reduce the laminating film line as an example. We've never used a thousand dollars. Why budget a thousand dollars, things like that. You know, if you look, this is a pretty extensive list. It's shaving a dollar here, a dollar there. The other thing to note is on page two, it goes through how we come up with that. So, if you look at our eleven twelve budget, the current fiscal year we're in, it's a hair under sixteen, fifteen point seven million. So, we're reading. The Finance Committee endorsed fifteen point nine, so that's a two fifty. That's primarily made up of additional ECS funding based on the Governor's comment, proposed budget. Typically, um, depending on how Hartford wants to do it, we'll hear early, I'm sorry, we will hear later, not early, on this. This happens to be a short legislative session, so maybe we'll hear quicker than, than not. But there's no guarantee this will come in. What we're basically going to ask the Board of Finance to do is whatever ECS money they get, don't use that to offset the town's contribution, flow that directly to us, because the, when the money comes into the, the town, the Board of Finance can do one of two things. It can give it to the school board as additional funding, or it can be used to offset the funding that they would have to give. So, in other words, if, if we had that, you know, if the, the town's bill to fund the Board of Education budget's a hundred thousand dollars, they can give us a hundred and sixty-three, six thirty-three, or they can give us a hundred thousand using sixty-three, six thirty-three to, to help make their contribution of a hundred. We're asking them to give us the full amount. Line six is, is what I call the Woodstock Academy pass-through. Now, there's been some question as to what this really is, because our bill at the Academy, if you remember, is going down a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. It's going down a hundred, so we will write the Academy a check for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars less in fiscal year twelve thirteen than we would in fiscal year eleven twelve. However, it's not as less as if they were held to the same fiscal constraints as we are. So, they went up one point nine five percent, as we heard on Saturday. That's the delta. So, you know, the Board of Finance, in a, in a not-so-direct way, told us we need to get as close to zero as we can, the eighty-seven thousand five hundred and eleven dollars represents if the Academy was held to the same level. That, in my mind, you know, it's a cost that we have very little influence over and no control over. Pre-K to rate shouldn't be expected to just pick up that contribution. I think that's something that's got to come from the town. And then, you know, we've heard again and again that we need to stay on our bus schedule, our bus purchase schedule. If we stay on this with the three-year lease-to-purchase option, we'll turn our fleet over every ten years. And we've got two buses right now that are over a hundred and thirty thousand miles and one of them's closer to a hundred and fifty. They're starting to, to quite frankly, nickel and dime in the district. And, you know, this is going back years before I got on the Board, but the Board of Finance again, you know what, that's a smart plan, if we're going to keep our busing. We're not going to outsource our busing, we're going to keep our busing, so that's just something prudent we need to do. You remember that there's, there's approximately the same amount in the current budget that's to pay for the first of three payments this fiscal year. So, next year, we'll have the second of three payments on two buses and we'll have the first of three payments on two more. That's two hundred and eight thousand dollars. So, if you do the delta, it's a net operating, uh, budget increase of forty-two thousand dollars. And again, so things on page one help us close that. Now, to the all-important issue of class sizes, you know, I'm speaking to both the Board and the public at this point, we have heard, in doing this, we added another teacher. We did that at about six forty-five tonight. We added a teacher to this request. This was different than what we did on Saturday, it's different than what we walked into. We were doing some other shifting. I know shifting isn't popular, but I, I think it's a fair compromise, and we do a little bit of shifting and we do some adding. So, with that, and I'm going to stress, average class sizes. It may mean that in a, in an average class size of twenty point two, somebody's got twenty-two and somebody's got eighteen. There are reasons for that beyond what we can discuss tonight. Suffice it to say, the Board has absolutely no input in what child gets in what class. I can't even tell you how many calls I get at home at the beginning of the year saying, I'd like Little Johnny to be with this teacher. And I remind them, I don't even know how the process works, I've never asked how the process works, I don't want to know how the process works, I trust our teachers who do the work to put Little Johnny and Little Janie in each class, that they're, know what they're doing. You know, this is part of the trust we have in our teachers, but going down the list, pre-K, twelve, thirteen, to the right, fourteen and a half, kindergarten, twenty, grade one, eighteen and a quarter, two, nineteen point six, three, nineteen point two, and four, twenty point eight. So, we're, we're adding some sessions. Five, twenty point two, six, nineteen point four, we smoothed the bubble out. Seven, twenty-two, and eight, sixteen point six. I'll remind everybody, especially grades seven and eight, there's a lot of changing because you basically have the algebra teacher, Mrs. Croft, that does a fantastic job. My son loves her to bits and pieces. She teaches all the kids, because they all move all classes, so it's not, you know, they've got their homeroom and then they start flipping, flipping classes for each one. So, these are class sizes based on the one point six percent increase that the Finance Committee of this Board recommends. You know, I think this is a reasonable budget. I, you know, in hearing some of the comments tonight, I think it's prudent that this Board, in addition to approving this budget, also include, like we have in years past, the needs of a good school. I mean, it has a lot of good work in it. I mean, the, the previous Board put a lot of work into it to come up with it, and it lists everything that we could possibly want. Well, almost everything that we could possibly, and we had to be reasonable. But, you know, we talk about foreign language in that. We talk about even lower class sizes. We talk about a more robust Gifted and Talented Program and all of those things. You know, we've heard over and over again that, you know, even from, from a private citizen who is, also happens to be on the Board of Finance, to put that up. And I think we should. I think we also need to come with what I would consider a reasonable request, knowing that that's a nonstarter. And we do have to take into account that, yes, part of our constituency are parents and part of our constituency are the students, but also part of our constituency is all taxpayers and all citizens of Woodstock. So, at this point, I mean, for the Board's consumption, unfortunately, you know, typically we like to, to get this and then go on at the next meeting due to scheduling of the Board of Finance, where we will be presenting the first Tuesday in March in order for the administration to have time to put all the dollars and cents in each account, we need to approve a budget this evening. But at this point, I'll throw it out for discussion as to thoughts and concerns. Look.
Tony, um, a couple of things that come to mind for me, and this is no surprise because I've said this earlier. One, of course, is Gifted and Talented. I just have a real issue with the word Woodstock Public Schools and no Gifted and Talented in the same area, both sentences.
Well, let me just clarify, we're not talking about touching the Gifted and Talented Program here at the middle school.
No, you're talking about in the elementary.
Yeah.
I fully understand.
Okay.
And I know there's about forty kids that are in that, in that vicinity.
Yeah.
But I wouldn't be comfortable endorsing a plan that didn't have a plan for what will happen with those forty kids and some statement about what that cost would be and where will it, will it come from. So, that's, to me, that, that's still a, something of a deal breaker for me. And the other one, that's kind of a new one that came up, so I'm probably over-hypnotic about, is the remedial math that has been moved. What are we doing for those kids who currently have remedial math? And now I hear, or I see, that's been removed to add some help to get the teacher, which is, by the way, you know, great job getting the teachers, the class sizes down, and you've heard everybody say that's worked, so a lot of hard work. So, I would love to hear about those two things that I could.
Okay.
Well, if we move gift the remedial math teacher, how will we service those kids?
Right, so how do we not leave those kids in a lurch? You know, it, it's great to reduce class sizes, that's, that's, I think that was everybody's number one priority, but these other two are two priorities, I think, for a lot of people, and especially the people who have children in that category. I don't think this Board should endorse a plan that abandons that without, without an appropriate plan to handle that for those kids. So, that's kind of, um, that's another important point to me. The third one, I totally endorse the concept of the amendment, and I'd love to see it, and I think all of the new guys would love to see what's come up. You know, if we don't keep showing that all the time, we'll lose track of those things and we should be adding to it.
Mm-hmm.
The other question is the technology issue. I think there's lots of different ways to address the questions we had ideas earlier, including outsourcing some parts of it, if not all of it. So, I just want to see how that gets handled in the budget and is that accounted for in the budget. But to me, the first two things I mentioned are very big.
So, for instance, with the technology thing, that's still a limited target. So, for instance, with the technology thing, that's still a limited target, and it's not addressed here.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, with the schedule, the timeline that we have, some things will come in after. And our hope is that they wouldn't negatively impact the budget. We don't know sitting here tonight.
But, how do we plan for it?
Well, I guess the easy answer, may not be the best one, is we continue to limp along like we are now. Is that the best answer? No, it's not. And I won't pretend that it is. But, without knowing what we don't know, it's not responsible to put a placeholder in, because it would set an expectation that it's going to cost about this. And we've heard a lot of good folks that, and a lot of the fantastic citizens have offered up their husbands on the weekends. You know, something like that, we would ask Bob to take back. Develop a plan. What needs to be, what can be offloaded, for lack of a better term, in regards to technology, that he can plan out and get help with, versus what needs to be done immediately? I mean, obviously, a teacher that their laptop doesn't work, or their smartphone doesn't work, you know, that can't be.
Do we agree that the status quo is unacceptable? I mean, can we get to that point? Do we agree to that?
I, well, I, right, speaking for myself, I would say, I think something needs to change. What that something is, I don't know, to be quite frank, and don't know enough to say, "This is the path to go down, and this is how much it will cost," if there's a cost at all. There may not be a cost at all, but there may be a huge cost or a moderate cost. We just don't know. And if we had another month to do the budget, that'd be one thing. But, we present the fifth of March, sixth of March, which means we've got to have our budget approved, unfortunately, tonight, because that gives Karen and her team enough time to actually go through a building to line item that we have to present to the Board of Finance. And they've requested it a week in advance. So, we presented the sixth, they wanted on the 28-ish.
So, I'm just, so if we, if the group believes it's not, the status quo is unacceptable, maybe, but if the group believes that, then my mind would say, something needs to go in there to ensure that we don't, that we fix the status quo. I understand, when you don't have a specific, it's like, you're going to put a line in there that says, "Just in case" or something.
Yeah, we don't have the luxury as a public.
And we don't have the luxury of time.
Well, we don't have the luxury of doing that either.
Yeah, yeah. So, I'm not sure how to handle it, so I can just address it. But, again, I go back to the first two things. How are we going to take care of those, the kids on what may be the two extremes, not in the middle, but the two extremes, the ones who really need some challenge and taken care of, the ones who truly need the help to bring up the stuff. And, you know, I mean, I did that as a kid.
You heard, they, no concrete plan yet, unfortunately.
Right. So, I guess that's an issue.
Okay.
So, a couple of things. One, I'd argue, we actually do have more time. If we go in and present a fuller budget to the Board of Finance, and they do cut us, and we're going to be going back to the table two months from now, that's two months of time to ask to figure this out. And we're trying to figure it out tonight. We're negotiating against ourselves. We're going to lock ourselves in the box that you're talking about. We made the best argument why we should present a fuller budget to the Board of Finance tonight. Mike Cliff, I'm also very leery of getting rid of part of the Gifted and Talented right off the bat. I'm very leery of the mass intervention, and the media clerk as well. We've also got some things around the SRBI where we can talk to the Board of Finance about. We've got some other avenues that we can talk to them about the extra revenue. We should explore those, instead of just capitulating on them, before we've adopted them. All right? We should not negotiate against ourselves. I mean, that's absolutely our thing.
Thanks, Sarah.
Well, just reading down through this, I'm, you know, I'm sorry that I haven't been more involved in some of the earlier discussions, but this obviously is not the budget for them to keep their salaries and send over. So, are these just the items that changes, or are these the sort of discretionary expenses that are listed here, or what, what is the selection?
These are the ones that, between the administration and the Finance Committee, we identified as most likely to go.
And attention to costs.
Yes. Yeah. And as an example, the WAQ is very gracious in their membership in taking a hard squeeze this year. So, there's no salary increase, unless you're swapping swim lanes.
Right.
There's no salary increase there. It's a very modest increase for our other two collective bargaining units.
Right.
We do have a significant increase in health premiums. But, again, going up 6 and 1/2 percent is better than going up 13 or 20 percent, like we're seeing in a lot of other places.
You know, I didn't even read the heading of the top production.
That's okay. That's okay. You know, I would also say that, you know, as part of my role as Board Chairman, I do, I'm on the K, Board Chairman Distribution List, and, you know, one of the things that they ask us every year to do at this time is fill out a spreadsheet. What was the superintendent's request? What was the Board of Fin, or what was the Board of Ed approving? What was, you know, the town approving when you have it? And, completely unscientific, the things that have been emailed in are coming in anywhere from, I haven't seen anybody hit a reduction, but a good third of them are coming in at a zero. But, they're anywhere from a 0 to 2%. It's kind of where most of them are landing. You know, there's some, I think it's New Fairfield is 7 and 1/2 percent. So, I'd love them.
Excuse me, but now, now I'm confused again, because for some of these things, like the U.S. group chairs, $100,000, that means we would be spending $500,000 less than, what, we would spend otherwise?
Yeah.
But, but there's no, but there's no total agreement here, so.
Yeah, yeah.
But, we don't know what the, what the total let's be cut from is.
Right, well, the, 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 the presentation we got last board meeting, actually, had more of the details, so we're just working off of that.
You did have some increased teaching salaries due to lane jumps, as you said.
Right.
Were those on here, right?
It's not, yes, it's, it's about $2,500, $2,500.
So, how do we see what the budget actually looks like?
It's around $25,000. Excuse me?
Well, presumably, there's other things going up and down. How do we see what, please show us.
Right, like, if.
This is not a.
I direct the board back to the presentation we had earlier, and given the fact that Oh, you've got it right there.
Karen's got it.
Karen's got it. It's blue. It's the major increases and decreases. And if you look at the back side of the page, Kevin, it's got exactly what you're asking.
Tony, while people are looking, just to echo something Kevin said, I had a boss, I always throw this over the top, but I had a boss once, I never had time to do it right the first time. I'd always find the time to make it, and it goes wrong. And so, if there is time, again, I don't know if there's time or not, but some are saying there is, and some are saying there aren't. If there is time, I'd love to be able to address some of these issues that are just coming up today, because in fairness, you guys did this a few hours ago.
Yep, right.
Well, first of all, I want to say, hell, these guys have been working harder than we've ever had a finance committee before. So, I mean, they've met more times. But, I have, I just want to echo the same concerns. How many, so, the Gifted and Talented is 40 students?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, what about?
Approximately 40.
The math intervention.
How, how many are?
Paul, math intervention, approximately number of kids that she services?
Probably about 120 percent of each grade level. At least, in one way, shape, or form. Some are scheduled, some are in form during the year that probably didn't have her services after the last time.
Seven or six.
There's some who are still in the homework studying period of time, next door, on math, basically, support.
The number is how much?
I don't know exactly, but she'll open most of the year, she serves 20 percent of the kids from each grade level, in one way, shape, or form.
Yeah. I mean, 20 percent of free, I think your population's 385, so about 76, 77.
So, it's a significant number between the two.
Yeah, it's, it's not too much.
Because, guys, I agree. I mean, those are, you can't, these are the kids that really need the extra help, and so to abandon that would be, I, and I certainly agree that 26 kids is a lot of kids in a class. So, I don't know. I have a hard time with it, too. Maybe we should just come up with a higher number and deal with it more time.
What's the total size of your professional development fund?
Of the, that's it. That's the.
Only way we know all professional?
No, no.
Okay.
There are two sources that we pay professional development fund. We have a grant for $16,000. That's the money that the Board of Education would pay out of its operating budget. So, we would still have the $16,000 in the grant.
Well, cutting it by 40 percent.
Cutting what? By 20 percent?
40.
Yeah, 40. The whole thing, yeah, about that.
Frank, I'm sorry.
All right.
Never mind. Go ahead.
All right.
Do you keep the Gifted and Talented and the Math Intervention? Does it require that we hire two additional teachers?
Well, if you left those in place, yeah.
Yes, because we were going to put the Gifted and Talented teacher in the third grade, and we were going to put the Math Intervention teacher in the fourth grade. But, because of what the committee did earlier, and recommended we replace the long-term, the long-term leave of absence, I would talk to Paul and Victor, we'd probably leave the Math Intervention person in place, put her in the sixth grade, and adjust in grades four and five. But, you'd have to hire two new teachers if you weren't going to eliminate Gifted and Talented and the Math Intervention program.
Could you roughly dollarize that, Frank?
Dollarize it?
Yeah. How many dollars is that?
If we're hiring two new teachers, what we would do is go out and advertise it at the master's third step. That gives us a little latitude if somebody comes in with a year or two years' experience. We're looking at about 46, 47 per position. She was talking about, well, you're talking about $92,000 in outright dollars plus benefits.
Twelve percent.
Well, about $12,000.
It's about $110,000.
You're looking at another $100,000 plus.
Kevin? Frank, you know, the opportunity cost associated with the SRBI, how much is that?
Yeah, Karen figured it out. Basically, basically what we did, since every teacher at the elementary school, every regular classroom teacher at the elementary school, we didn't calculate, and people like Mrs. Bremin, who's a remedial reading teacher, because that's her job anyway. So, we just figured in the remedial, the regular classroom teacher at approximately half an hour per day. And then, not all teachers at the middle school teach SRBI, and we do have some who are dedicated to that already, like Mrs. Abbott, like Mrs. Prager. So, we picked out just those teachers who teach SRBI in addition to their regular costs, again, at half an hour a day, which is about 1/15th of their day. Mrs. Monroe and Mrs. Millenace then went and took each teacher's salary, did 1/15th of it, and we came out to a total of?
$205,000.
$205,000.
So, there are some positions right there, and there's some, on what is allowable.
Yeah, but that's, I mean, it's not necessarily a case that that time, that that money would be available, right? Because if those teachers who were doing SRBI didn't have to use that half hour a day, then they would be doing something else.
Yes, they would.
And I mean, reducing our classroom staff, right?
By doing SRBI, we are reducing their ability to service the general population.
Or bringing art back to all four middle school grades.
Keep in mind, art was not a budget issue.
Well.
No, it wasn't, Kevin. It was, we serviced SRBI and art before we moved to trimesters.
But, let me.
With the entire, hold on, Frank. With the entire population. We did that before we moved to trimesters. The move to trimesters was to try to do SRBI differently. It was not a budget issue.
Right.
Okay. If the art teacher were not servicing SRBI kids, we would then have some more available, and the schedule would be easier to put in place. So, once we had to afford the SRBI interventions, we had to take people out of what they were doing. That made the schedule more complicated, and more difficult to fit everybody in. So, I mean, if, if you want to leave everything that you have in place and afford us the ability to provide SRBI, we'd probably need another two teachers at each school, in addition to the two that you want to put in to leave Gifted and Talented and Remedial Math in place. We're looking at another $200,000.
It seems at very least clear to me that we have an additional state mandate, it's an allowable proposition to 46 exceptions, that we should be taking advantage of. We've got, we're short positions, and instead of going and asking the Board of Finance for money, we're just cutting the positions. That's wrong.
Well, I, I'm in total agreement that the class sizes have to be, we have to figure out a way to make them go. I'm not willing to abandon the math intervention program. But, I also want to remind everybody that we always focus on dollars and cents. And dollars and cents are very helpful, but they don't make the school system. And, you know, I think that you can't use the excuse that, "Oh, we can't do this, and our kids got a lower grade on that because we didn't have money." You know, I mean, it's, there's a lot of systems that work with a lot less money than we have, not in Connecticut, but in other states. So, I mean, that's something you can't lose focus of, because you can't blame everything on that.
Blame something, somebody.
Well, class size, I'll go along with you that 100%.
That's what we're talking about here.
With this 1.6, yeah.
Sure, we're willing to give up some.
Well, but you're giving up, you're, you're just trading.
Right. Given though, given that, given that we're still exploring other cost-saving measures at this time, such as technology, such as possibly looking at health insurance, probably looking at many things that are still on the table for that finance committee, correct? I mean, we could collectively commit to the first dollar that we bring out of that, putting in a handful of spice in remedial math, correct?
If we so choose.
I still don't think it's done with this.
Assuming that the money's real, I mean, you know, you might not find the time. You cut the class size, that's what we need to do, is cut the class size in exchange for that.
There's a very, there's a very easy way, it's going to be unpopular, but there's a very easy way to cut class sizes and keep these two programs. We have two coordinators that can slide back into a classroom. What's more important, coordination or class sizes or remediation? Because I really don't think going to the Board of Finance, whether it's allowable under 46 or not, and asking for a half a million dollars is even going to work. We tried that last year. What happened last year? We got less than we even asked for, and by the Board of Finance's own frustration, they admitted they didn't even know what they voted on. Whereas, when we went with something reasonable the year before, we had no issues whatsoever.
So, are you saying that because the Board of Finance made a mistake, we should not?
No, what I'm saying, Kevin, is, what I'm saying, Kevin, is, with declining enrollment, okay, our enrollment is down 10% in the last 10 years. Costs go up. There are other ways to achieve this. A district this size having two coordinators that could slide back into a classroom at least next year to help with the bubble, and maybe the and maybe the following year to help with a bubble, guess what? If you look at class sizes, that bubble's gone in two years, the big one's gone in two years, then you're looking at 73. They can go back to coordination.
So do you remember when we had this discussion in the Finance Committee meeting about two years ago? Dr. Baron, Mr. Kamash, and Mr. Kato, sat there and talked to you about how important those positions were?
Yes, I do.
And so once again, we're giving up programs that exist in the school with unknown impact. Where all the administration is telling us not to do it, because you don't want to go to Board of Finance.
No, no, that's, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is it's not reasonable to go with a half a million dollar increase when by their own hand, when we ask, the Finance Subcommittee asked, or in their own writing, what they do.
We have a state mandate, which according to Proposition 46, we have an intervention for. We have ignored that, that was insane. We should not have done that.
I, I can't go back and fix the past.
Yes, we can.
No, what I'm-
Yes, we can. We can go back and fix it.
We ignored it in years past. What I'm saying is, my belief, and I'm one of nine, is asking for a half a million dollars when our town population is down, when our tax base is down, when our school population is down, is not reasonable.
What's the worst that happened? They tell us that we got to do less.
No, it's not, it's not, it's not the worst that can happen.
I just feel that's irresponsible on our part, too. I know we have-
Absolutely.
Position to watch over the children, but I think if you go in there for a half a million, a million dollar increase is irresponsible. We did get a letter saying, please be careful. I don't remember how it reads, but-
Did we get that letter, Kevin?
Yeah, but then every year you ask for an increase of whatever it is. I think what we need to do is, and I have to agree with Tony, we have board members. Maybe we pay a stipend to do that at the end of the day. I hear other towns do do that in the year. Can they pay us stipends for the coordination of?
Yeah, they hold the market ads.
Could we simplify just the discussion a little bit and, and say, the argument, say, just ignore this just for a moment, for a moment? Because I want to get back to it. But just say in the big picture, we want to go to the Board of Finance and say, look, our biggest issue right now was class sizes. We've had it for years. It's a big issue. We will solve that problem by having two more teachers there to, to the schools. We don't, I don't think we need to talk about cutting out remedial math. I don't think we need to talk about cutting out gifted and talented in the elementary school. We're going to talk about what the schools need, which is two teachers to reduce class sizes. And to try and offset some of those costs, we've come up with a laundry list of things that we're going to reduce. So instead of, at first blush, going in and saying, we're going to trade this and that, we're going to trade coordinators. Can we just go to them with this, two teachers, minus the things that, that we all agree probably could be reduced? And make the case that way? Or am I too much of a Pollyanna here?
Well, you'd be basically looking at an increase of between $315,000 and $400,000 versus $250,000.
To be honest, I'm a little, I mean, I'm a little, the 250, I mean, I've been told numerous times yesterday that the town is short 15% of their funding because of the review they had last year. So we're looking at a 3% mill rate this year that everybody's getting.
A 3-mill increase.
In, in the mill rate to make it even. So people are going to scream about a 3-mill increase where your taxes will probably stay even. So people are going to get a little, that's what I'm saying, after that, but people are going to get frustrated seeing a 3-mill increase. Their tax is not going to go up, but some people are going to go, you know, a 3-mill increase.
So it may not understand.
So for the last three years, we've been getting math from heaven and a form of federal money. So that, that has dried up this year. And while the townsmen are owing that federal money, the bill has come due this year. And a town needs to pay it, right? Or at least you've got to try. And that's, that's, that's the reason why we're having so much trouble this year, right?
Well, that's the number.
Well, 315 is the education jobs fund.
Now, that was last year. What was the year before?
There was no money. The year before it was our funds.
We had the our funds there.
And we added, three years, three or four years, we've gotten.
Well, we had our funds for two years, and then, because we stretched it for two years, and then we got the jobs fund. So basically for three years, we've been supported by federal, federal money. If you, if you remember, the first year we got the our funds, they said we had to spend a specific amount for the first year. You could spend it all if you wanted to. They said we didn't think that was prudent. We were going to carry it over for the second year. So we did that, then you had the jobs money. So it's been three years of supporting the budget through federal, federal funds.
What is the population decrease from last year?
About 300 people, Mike?
No, I haven't, no, I'm a student.
Oh, oh. Well, we've got about 503 and 385.
Yeah, correct. 503, elementary school, 385.
888. No, 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 that's how many we have this year. Last year we had, I know it was over 900. Because it was about 490 and 470, it was about 490.
This year or last?
No, 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 last year.
The decrease from last year to this year is? I have 11 of 12 numbers, and I have 12 13.
Do you probably want to take this stat?
I know, I know for a fact the number was over 900. I don't know, it wasn't, it wasn't 980.
So what did you just come up with?
We've got 888 right now.
We're down about, oh, what's it, 16 students?
So the number keeps going down in any way, so we can't any kind of capacity barriers, or suddenly we need less teachers, right? Still be the same amount?
The answer to that, Kevin, is no, because it wasn't 16 third graders, so we can't cut a third grade classes. Two from here, two from there.
Well, you've been arguing that for a while when you saw the class sizes, so the answer to that question is no.
I think to some degree it has to be done, but there's, there's got to be a compromise. There's just as many people out there that aren't speaking today that need to have some kind of, you know, answer to financial responsibility as well. I mean, we get this all the time, and we have come to a point where we've addressed the situation of class sizes and just really kind of worked it out and said, yes, we're going to do it. Quite effectively, we're already supposed to get to that. So on both sides, I think both sides of the issue perhaps understand and kind of feel a little bit to a degree. There's a lot of things in here that we can still revamp, and maybe some of these things might not even be an issue or be a concern. But we have, you know, just, you know, an oil tank, $60,000, that could be 120,000,000. Depends whether we have a, you know, a pressure status going to leak tomorrow. We just don't know what that issue is. When we know it's there, it's something we have to deal with, and where's that going to come from? So, I mean, we have to kind of keep focus on pretty much the big picture and not just every single refill.
Frank, why are there, just, maybe I missed something. Why are there five sessions planned in the eighth grade? You have three kids.
You have a math teacher, you have a language arts teacher, you have a standing teacher, you have a science teacher, and a social studies, a charmed analyze math.
Right, yeah, some days, yeah, some days, right, where they do that, the class sizes. Any other thoughts, comments?
Just want to say thanks to the Finance Committee.
Yeah.
I mean, the initial draft that we saw was hideous. No sports, no spice.
Right.
Lots of staff cuts, so where we are now is so much better than where we were. I really think we're pretty close.
No, I, see, but the support, Tony and Mike's issues of, the history of working with the Board of Finance is that, was it two years ago, we went and we said, okay, and we started out with a, with a wish list, or whatever you want to say, and saying, you know, we'd like this, and we'd like that, and we'd like that. And they said, that's wonderful that you like that, but give us a 0% anyway. And so we went ahead and, and we gave them their 0%, and then we said, but if we had another X amount of dollars, we could, we could fix the, we had a dangerous piece of equipment in it, we had some, some different issues. And because we had worked with them, as opposed to making an adversarial thing, they gave us that extra stuff we asked for. The next year we went in and we went in with a pie in the sky and six scenarios and all this stuff, and they basically gave us nothing.
So I keep on hearing the Board of Finance is acting compressively.
Well, I think if they go up to the level of Proposition 46, which is, seems like what they've been doing forever. And they give basically, no matter how the game is played, it ends up being 80% to us and 20% to our town.
75, 25.
There's stuff over, there's some of our stuffs over there, but anyway, whatever, yeah. I mean, but the point is, is it just seems to, we can't, we come in and we play this game and, you know, I think I saw some class sizes in here somewhere that were some, the opposite of a bubble year. We have a year that has very few kids, and they're down to 18 or 19 kids a class. 18? But I haven't heard any of their parents talk, you know, because they're happy. You guys have a legitimate beef and that your kids are in a bubble. My, my daughter was in a bubble year. From kindergarten to 12th grade, it was the same issue, you know? And this is not something new that just came up, you know, with the people that are there in here, and it's an ongoing problem. But we, we have a finite amount of money in this town, and we just have to do the best with it. And we have to get the most we can to the kids, but being adversarial is not necessarily the way to get things done.
It seems to have worked through the Board of Finance, according to you, right?
Having said that, any further discussion? At this point, I'd entertain a motion to approve the budget as presented with a 1.6% increase. And do I make that motion? Second? I think we had the discussion. All the sides, you have your handle, no? No, okay. Any further comments? All in favor of moving forward with that? One, two, three, four, five. Opposed? Abstain? All right. Pack it together for the Board of Finance. Opposed was Steve, Cliff, and Kevin, and Brian, James. Second read of the Safe School Committee Plan. Do we have the Safe School?
Uh, it, it could be.
All right, I'll pack it. Okay. Oh, here it is. Starts on page... Get there.
The only difference from the original are some edits, periods, spellings, stuff of that nature.
Starts on page 27? Ah, there we go. Starts on page 37, folks. Yeah, it's a long one. Okay, so hopefully everybody's had their chance to do their homework, starting on page 37, and read through this in spare time. I believe, Frank, you're looking for a motion to approve it tonight? And did you see what the change in the last version was?
Uh, there are simple edits, periods where they belong, spelling of cyberbullying, excellent words, that type of stuff.
Okay. So it starts on 37 and goes through page 62. So here, a motion to approve as amended? Cliff, second. Mr. Bernardi, only discussion?
Yes.
Staff?
I, I'm from the House Policy Committee, but I was reminded recently that the question, what, what is the definition of bullying? And I was wondering whether that was included in this document.
It's included in policies that you have, and it's also included in there. Policies are coming down a little bit further under a free duty, policies JIC and JICD. I think that, I think, I think they're in there too.
It says twice.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I would say, actually, there's a specific reading, which is, I heard a little clarify story recently about bullying. And we stopped attacking, not recently, but, but within our right. But a girl was actually assaulted, that I, she was, statistically, bullying was actually assaulted in Oregon. And the headmaster said that unless there was blood involved, there was nothing to do about it. And I thought, I was, what?
What headmaster was that? I mean, how far back does it go?
It's nothing.
So it would be the current, right? Yeah, page 46 there. Steve?
Uh, Dr. Baron, this was based on a template?
Uh, yeah, there are several templates that were out there. This was on one, I believe it was, this might have been the one out of the CAS offices, which are the Connecticut Association of Schools. But there are several floating out there. East Town had one, CAS had one. And I know those two in particular, but the majority of them are basically the same because the legislation requires things like a Safe Schools Climate Committee, a Safe Schools Climate Coordinator, and what have you. So they're, they're basically.
So this, this covers, crosses the keys and dots the i's.
Any further discussion? All in favor? You have a, you have a, new business, five-year capital plan.
Those two, right.
That's under new business.
Okay, sorry.
Page 63 in your packet. So this has been endorsed by the Long Range Planning Committee?
Actually, we have several changes to it that don't look like they're in there yet.
Yeah, I thought they were.
Okay.
What were you looking for?
So for the roof, there's still not $500,000 spread out over three years, and I only see the one roof on it. An elementary school, an elementary school roof on it. Which makes it, we think this is the one that we got at our meeting before we made the changes.
Okay, so you, so you want both roofs on there and it to be 1.5 million?
Yeah, there were some other issues that are in our mission minutes if we ask the end.
I thought we looked at the minutes and we drew every one of them, Kevin. We may not have caught the combined three, 500,000s, and you can include that as a change. But I thought we caught everything else, Kevin.
But we don't have the middle school roof, do we?
Well, no, but the 1.5 million would be for both roofs, if you recall. So we can simply add WESW in that.
Is that 1.77?
But it was a real ballpark figure, Kevin. I mean, if you want us to put in 1.77, that's no big deal.
Put in 1.8? Okay, so we're going to, so folks on line nine, WPS slash WMS. Replace flat roof. The year requested is fine. You want it in 1415?
You said the first year, Kevin.
Yeah.
Okay, so 1415, change that number from 500 to 1.8?
Yeah, and then get rid of the other two.
And then get rid of the other two. Okay. What other changes?
I think those are the only ones that you, that you guys know of.
So the petitions aren't here.
Well, we're still waiting on some money from the renovation, which we don't have in hand yet, but they're going to be done once we get that money.
No, that's great. Number 11.
Oh, it's still there?
And if there is.
Haven't done yet.
Wishful thank you. It's been there for, what, 25 years?
Probably.
So what is the number, or the number of two years? What's the tracker? We have a tracker. What, we have a tracker? 1989 tracker.
Yes.
We have a tracker.
Oh, hold on. We just bought one.
That was a load of, that was a different.
So we have two trackers?
I couldn't tell you the sizes and set them, so. Yeah, to the building.
What do we use a tracker for?
Oh.
So we have two trackers?
I'm sorry, not to harp on a small item, but wait a minute.
We need two?
I mean, we just bought one, what, two years ago? Three years ago, maybe, we bought one? And it, I mean, it was a pretty expensive one. It wasn't 25 grand. It was like, what, 15, 16, something like that? Yeah, a couple of years ago, so.
And we have two buildings?
Well, two facilities. I, I would say, I, I think it's quite a bit better if we take this off and maybe put on a- on a trailer, for the truck we bought at the end of last fiscal year, and have it loaded up on the truck and drive it over, versus buying another, I mean, it's something that, I haven't got it, we're not going to buy it anywhere.
Well, I mean, you know what, Mr. Panter?
Do we, uh, do we know?
Why do you need a panter?
Hold on, go ahead, Kevin.
I was just going to say, do we know this is actually the same tracker, the same purpose as the other one?
We're just seven dollars.
Yeah, so, well, I'm, I'm comfortable pulling it up until we understand that.
Well, I, I think the big thing that the public needs to know, and the new members, is this is a state-required wish list, and if it's not funded, and it's not there, it's just a document, it's there, so if the money ever became available, we can pull it in.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, exactly, we, if we find out, we don't need it, we just won't ever ask for it.
Right, no, I understand that.
And it's not on the list.
No, I, I mean, I, I get that, it's just one of those things where it's like, we just bought one, I really looked at the Long Range Planning Committee, did they get into that one, I mean, this, if we don't need it, because if I were one of the guys, disingenuous, put it on the list.
I'm not sure if the two tracks.
Just serves the same purpose, so.
What's that? This is basically a wish.
Oh, yeah, let us. I guess what I believe with cases.
And that will very well be.
Who's the Long Range Planner, you guys, right?
Yeah, so I.
So you guys put it on, what was the purpose?
Well, it's been on there for quite some time, duh. I was just.
Oh, eight, oh, nine.
Yeah.
We don't have to spend a lot of time talking about it, it's one of those things, but it's like, it struck me as odd, because we just, I knew we had just bought one, and it's, we bought one, but didn't buy one that could do both jobs, that's something we should look at, to see if, in the future, we can buy one device that can do multiple jobs, versus, no, we're replacing this one, because it did, you know, it's just part of the theme of trying to do things a little differently. And at the end of the day, the Board of Finance is not going to fund us anyway.
If you have one more, and then you have one tracker that does genuinely make a significant difference.
No, no, I.
I'm sure that's what the case is.
I would agree with that, it's just one of those things.
And it has been on there since early.
Okay, so, so given the change we made, so here, a motion to approve the five-year capital plan with the change made tonight to the line nine. And we got Kevin's second. Brian, any further discussion?
How do I add, how can you add these?
Long range capital.
Long range capital plan goes over.
Yeah, we actually have another option.
Well, I, I, you, you walk-in boxes up in the elementary school, the building was built nineteen ninety, fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven.
The electricity that uses alone is probably powered by a home for a month, the compressor is bad, it's an old box, but I know that's about thirty grand, just a month. The walk-in refrigerator freezer in the elementary school.
It's not on yet, it's not.
Yeah, but it's, it's not there, but it's old enough.
So Mike, I.
What is it like? I can't, are we?
Walk-in refrigerator freezer.
Oh, I did, okay.
Like for, for the food service, so.
Yeah, no, he's been here a little.
So you, when, so this, this is a good question, folks, everybody, this is a good question, you know, Mike happens to work in that industry, where he understands, that you look at, say, oh, Jesus, my Lord, what are you doing? Funnel that to the Long Range Planning Committee to put on this list.
All right. You asked me how to do it, I will.
Yep, so, you know, if anybody sees that.
Otherwise, we're relying on the, you know, the administration to tell us, that's what they're supposed to be, it's like, if you're an expert.
And to be fair to these guys, they might not know that, there's a new technology out for compressors, well, but you know that, because you're in the space, I'd look at it and say, oh, it works, it's fine, I mean.
Refrigerator.
Right, you know, it's worth it.
The electricity that you can save a whole.
Could potentially, right, you know, what's the return on investment?
We have a motion on the table.
Well, we have a, well, we have a motion on the table right now to approve this.
If you can add a friendly amendment.
If you'd like to add a friendly amendment, and you have a dollar amount, we can add it to the list tonight.
Add a walk-in refrigerator freezer to the Long Plan, Long Range Planning Committee, and budget thirty thousand dollars for that.
And can I ask you to also specify at the elementary school?
At the elementary.
So we will add a line underneath twenty that says WES, walk-in refrigerator freezer, year requested, twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve. What year, Mr. Bernardi, would you like to put set funds in? Would you like to put them in this year? Next year?
Let's try next year.
Try next year, okay. In line twenty, thirteen, twenty-fourteen, adding thirty thousand dollars for that. Is there a second for the friendly amendment?
No, we, Brian, I just.
Okay, I'm sorry. Brian, do you as well?
Yes.
There we go.
One quick comment?
Yes, Steve?
Since we've got some public left, uh, there's a painting due to chipping item on here, and as we were talking about technology, folks, there's a lot of people that could volunteer to come out on a Saturday and paint, I would certainly.
Okay.
So thanks, this is my only opportunity to make that comment, so.
Couple of changes coming up.
Actually, our, our next long-range plan, you can be at the school to kind of do a walk group.
Very good. We have motion on the table, A.
Just one, yes, comment, I don't, as far as volunteer work being done, if it's, we have to consider liability.
Yes.
On that before we.
Oh, yeah, before we just throw the gates open, then we've got to create a process to do that. I would hope that we create that.
I know, basically nowadays volunteers are supposed to be as accountable as the professionals, getting staff in this, basically.
So I, and I think Brian brings up a good point, we've heard a lot of good things tonight, and there is a process we need to work with it to do that, versus just throwing open the doors. Having said that, any further discussion on the five-year capital plan? All in favor with set changes? Unanimous. First read, school starting and dismissal times, we'll start with one of the times here, that starts on page sixty-four. Typically, for the new members, what we do, and we have a policy, is we put it in the packet, read it at your leisure, we're not going to go through and read each word here tonight, it will come back again at March's meeting, where we will vote to approve or send it back to the committee for more rework. So we do a first read, and then a second read. So this is your fair warning on your first read. Okay. You've got the school starting and dismissal time, you've got the cyberbullying policy, the bullying behavior in schools policy, I think that's it, yeah, so those three. Just as, as a note of, of a little bit of history, there are instances where, because we've got to meet a state or federal mandate, that we've got to approve them in the same night, that is rare. Typically, you'll see them one night, and then the next time you meet, we'll do it again. I think that's happened once or twice in the, the two-plus years I've been on the board, because we found out we were not complying to something, and had to get it done. But typically, that's how we'll handle these. So read it at your leisure, if you have any questions, Julie, Sarah, and Cliff are on the policy committee, feel free to reach out to them in advance, you know, if you read something that just doesn't make sense, and, you know, you want to get a little bit more background to understand if you're okay with it or not, I encourage you to do that. Citizens' participation.
Hi, um, I'm just very disappointed that you brought forward the budget that you did, and I think that you ducked, that you could have made this on, if you had a little more time, brought forward a fuller budget. I think there are two particular, um, facts that I wanted to stress, one is that town and youth program, and it's a program in elementary school, that is not limited to forty kids, that program is every single child in that, in that school, every single child that's enrichment is part of their schedule, and that is going to be eliminated. So when you say it's just forty kids, I think that's important to clarify, perhaps there's not enough forty kids, I mean, not every kid. The other one I'd like to back out of distress is that, um, your concern about asking for a large amount of money from the town and the Board of Finance, which, uh, schools is the fifth lowest in person spending in the state of Connecticut, that is, you're going to be afraid to increase to what you need to have, because we are already spending so small on the scale of my town's fall, and we've been doing that year over year, and your legitimate need that the school has, and, and I'm sad that you didn't bring forward the budget to address those needs.
I, I too, I'm just extraordinarily disappointed, um, I don't understand why we couldn't have been forward a budget based on what we needed, I couldn't agree more with you, gentlemen, and I'm right that I couldn't go forward, what we needed in the budget would certainly allow us more time to, um, look for money in other areas, and now we lost that opportunity. Um, last year, we saw, you know, the promises that class sizes would be reduced in initial budgets, and what happened? It didn't happen, and I fully expect that this time next year, class sizes will be where they are, because we had no negotiating, uh, headroom, um, and I fully expect in the next months to be sitting in finance meetings, um, trying to, you know, help prevent improper cost to the budget, and that, and that will most likely be the position that we're in as our staff.
I'm just going to echo what Michelle and Pearson said, my daughter, actually, I didn't say this earlier, but she benefits from the enrichment program with Mrs. Polco, without it, she would have been a very disenchanted, very bored child from the time that she's entered kindergarten. She needs that program, she doesn't know that she is gifted nor talented, um, I tell her she goes to Mrs. Polco because she has special needs, because in my opinion, she has special needs, whether they're a deficit or a, an added feature to her, she has special needs. My worry about the program, I know me, I know I will be able to supplement in this year to come, my worry is, you've taken it out, it will never, ever be put back in, so what can I say to the parent? In the parent-to-parent program, whose kindergartner comes into kindergarten and has anxiety because one child doesn't know their colors, while this child knows one through one hundred and wants adding, and that teacher can't meet the needs of that child, who is exceptional, so there's no more gift to descend to, because you cut it out in two thousand twelve, you cut that future for that child, thank you. I also want to say that I would hope, including Mr. Walker, that you would operate from a place of yes, yes, we can, to borrow praise unfortunately, but yes, we will, I will try, I will do my best, I will operate from a positive level rather than no, 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 warehouse, 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 that is not the perception I want my town and my board to represent, and I'm highly disappointed. I've rolled my sleeves up, I try my very best, and I hit a wall, I will hit the wall, I will be here, I will be a nudge on your back.
It's, it's a shame that we've reached the wall here, I expected to reach the wall somewhere else, I'm utterly shocked that the wall is here, this is the Board of Education, we elected you to be the advocates for our children, we're done now. You're, the woman here is completely right, it's out of the budget, it's gone, it's non-negotiable, we're done.
On Saturday, you mentioned something about teachers have a plan, have a story to save money, and approach that in a different manner, I swear.
My understanding is that what was initially talked about isn't going to work, they're currently sitting here tonight, it's not a plan.
Can you clarify that, please? Can you clarify what that plan was, because that was my point of recension with you. What was that plan and who?
Excuse me, I didn't have the details then, and I don't have them now, I'm going on what I'm hearing from the district.
From?
Mary, yes, can you?
It was never a plan with the, um, administration, the second, third, and fourth grade teachers got together as a group, and initially drafted a letter to go to the administration, which they have never seen. The reason they have never seen it is because what they were requesting is a lower class size for third and fourth, the reason the second grade is there is because it's very difficult for us, in five sections, to take our five kids, five sections of kids, and put them into four sections of third, it's, it's disheartening to us to see that happen to kids. So we got together as, as a group, and formulated the letter, which neither Frank nor we were seeing, um, but we happened to show them, and it is in a draft, very rough draft form, and it, we actually got together the same week that, um, Frank presented the budget the first time, and a fifth, fourth, third grade, and a fifth, fourth grade person was in there, so it became a report. There was no discussion about, um, there's nothing in this letter about gift and talented, or any other way to reach that goal, um, of getting there, except that we realized that things have to change, or at least, we're under the impression of delivering this down for the young, um, that it's a financial situation, and something has to give, but we were asking that, please, in all best interest of the children, for all the children, that, that there will be smaller class sizes, because if you have a class, I've been taught here since nineteen seventy-two, if you have a class of twenty children versus a class of twenty-seven children, there is no way that you as an individual person can get to individual children and meet everyone's needs, if you have twenty, you have a shot, if you have twenty-seven, I don't think it's possible. Now, for five years, the third and fourth grade teachers have had twenty-six, twenty-seven kids in their class, and basically, I'll admit, I went to them, and said, what are you guys going to do? Are you going to sit back and say, get me a gap? Or are you going to at least ask? And they said, well, we'd like to ask, but we don't know how, and so I initiated the meeting to sit down with the staff and talk to them, and we did draft this letter, which went everywhere. So the plan, of any kind of plan, it never was a plan, it was just a request.
You didn't talk to the board then?
No, we never went to the board, we never went to the administration.
Okay, thank you, Mary.
Any other, Nancy?
Um, it's not adversarial to go to the Board of Finance to advocate for what the needs of the school are, it never was adversarial, it didn't create an adversarial relationship, in fact, it is, it's due to do that. You have a Board of Finance member here tonight speaking, not on behalf of the board, who specifically said, I'd like to hear what the schools need, I think that's the board, the, the budget that should be brought forward. Additionally, you have, that same member said, and let's hear the plan of how we can help the town get there by costing out your SRVI costs, your mandated SRVI costs, and making the case to the Board of Finance as to why that is no different than transportation, that is no different than, than, um, special ed, ed costs, it is a resource-intensive, state-mandated program. I, I don't think I heard a final decision on whether the board would bring that forward in your presentation, and I don't think you necessarily closed the door on doing that. So as you pull together this package, or maybe here tonight, you need to make that decision, uh, as to whether you will do that, uh, two-hundred-and-five-thousand dollars is what we hear, as I heard you go through the methodology, that is understated, to take fifty percent of the teacher's day is not the cost, it's fifty, it's the percentage of the teacher's teaching time that is the real cost, that, that may be on the margin, but my bet is that two-oh-five would go, go to, I mean, it's obviously going to go to a higher number. Um, and then I, I also just, I want to recap, come back to this discussion that happened on AR, did I hear, Dr. Baron, you, or the board say that you are, I think you said, you're close to a hundred percent certain that you would bring forward a scheduling proposal that would fully reinstate AR for seventh and eighth grade?
I, I am working on a scheduling, uh, format that I have right now, hopes will reinstate AR.
And the board will see that when?
Hopefully in March.
In March, okay, so.
And that puts computers?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, there will be plenty of time before the end of the year for parents to, to see that, be able to react. Okay, thank you.
Any others? George?
Just, so, right, did you say I was here on behalf of?
No, I said we were not.
Thank you. I don't want to stomp on Dave Bosmer's territory.
No, no, we, we all understood that, yeah.
No, I'm speaking for my heart as a taxpayer and as a parent, you know. No, I'm speaking for my heart as a taxpayer and as a parent, you know. Please, don't, what we need to hear, we need to know what operating costs are, and what we need for this, and that's what, Prop 46 does the dirty work for us in this county. It's not going to be the Board of Finance this year, it could be the limits of Prop 46, unfortunately.
That's why you bring forward the SRVI cost.
But that's why the SRVI is so important, yeah.
I just was hoping that we could make an action item for Dr. Baron to get at the proposal for what our options are for kids at the elementary school.
And remedial.
Pardon me?
And remedial.
And remedial, yes, I'm sorry, yeah, I know what you mean, too.
You want me to come up with a plan for putting together gifted and talented without a gifted and talented person?
What are, what our possibilities are?
There's only one option. Have the teachers do it in their classrooms, and therefore, they're going to have to give up something that they're doing out, so the option there is.
Are there after-school options? Are there weekend options?
There are after-school options. In those cases, you're going to have to pay someone's stipends.
Yeah.
Weekend options?
Might be a lot less than the.
Coordinator options?
Yeah.
Coordinators are doing, well, they're not doing gifted and talented now.
So your motion to adjourn? Second?
Okay.
Yep. Yep.
Contains every line item or contains? Final number. Yeah, because it runs up on. Okay, here, can you stop it and take a moment?